So let them know that we're ready.
Okay.
We're ready, then you tell them.
Yeah, this reaction. Oh, now we're on. We're on now, Sue.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is the meeting of the City of Pacifica Council on January 25th. We have a closed session item, and I'm going to read the description of that. And then I'm going to ask if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Timothy Davis, Employee Organizations, Pacifica Firefighters Local 2400, Teamsters Local 560 Battalion Chiefs, Teamsters Local 350 Department Directors, Teamsters Local 350 Management Employees, Teamsters Local 856 Miscellaneous Employees, Teamsters Local 856 Wastewater Treatment Plant Employees, Pacifica Police Officers Association, Pacifica Police Supervisors Association, and Police Management Association. Do we have to do our role? Do I need to state who's present? I'm clerk, city clerk Coffee.
We'll do that when we open it up for the regular session. I don't see any public attendees at this time, so it looks like there's no public comments to be made.
All right, then we'll adjourn to a closed session.
Mayor Beckmeyer, you can give the prompt to PCTV when you're ready to go live.
Are you ready, council? Yeah, okay, there we go. We're ready. Okay. We're back from closed session. Is there any closed session report, city attorney?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. Then we'll move into our open session for the meeting. And can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Votarlas. Councilmember O'Neil.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here. We'll have a salute to the flag led by Mayor Protem Beer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, would you like me to make the announcements of the meeting format for tonight?
Please.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use star nine or asterisk nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if you're dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and were provided to council members if received by 4 o'clock PM today. Email public comments are not monitored during the live meeting. Any received after 4:00 PM will be compiled and provided to council and posted after the meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
All right, so turning to our consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. And we will be adopting items on the consent calendar by one motion unless council member or person in the audience requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. Do I have any hands from the attendees regarding pulling an item from the agenda? I see one hand.
Beth Brooks, we have one hand raised for public comment.
Shall we have that comment and find out the item?
Yes, clerk Coffee, when you're ready with the timer.
I don't think we'll need the timer at this point. We'll just state which item the person requests to speak on.
Hello.
Hi, this is Christine Bowles, and I request to speak on item five, Repaving of Monterey Road, please.
Okay, item five will be pulled from the agenda. Are there, thank you. Are there any other items that council wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda pulling item number five.
I will, oh. I will second that, but I just wanted to make a comment and, and thank Lisa Peterson and her efforts in trying to get the streets redone with the story seal on Terranova and the rehabilitation thing on Monterey. And also in regards to the changes in the bidding procedures for the concrete and curb ramps. So I just wanted to send kudos to Lisa Peterson, Department of Public Works. If I do second it, minus item five.
We'll have a roll call though.
The consent calendar minus item five was moved by Votarlas, seconded by O'Neil. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlas.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the consent calendar minus item five passes with a five to zero vote.
All right, so then we will have item five considered separately. We'll have public comment on this item. I'm looking for my attendees list. So if you wish to speak on item five, if you could please raise your hand. I see one hand so far.
Our first speaker will be Christine Bowles. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Christine Bowles. I'm an architect and I live on Monterey Road near the intersection of Hickey. First, I want to thank Public Works for their work repaving our street, especially the new retaining wall and sidewalks that made this dangerous intersection walkable again. When I first got notice of the proposed repaving, I contacted Public Works to see if they might be able to add a storm drain as part of the work. You might remember from our vestamar appeal, the videos I showed you of the repeated flooding that happens on our steep street during a heavy rain. Neighbors testified that the volume and speed of the water here has sometimes been enough to move parked cars. I was told by Public Works that drainage was not in the budget as part of the repaving. The first question I have relates to how the city can better engage residents before undertaking expensive projects such as this. Public Works staff was shocked when they saw my videos. Obviously, residents have much more direct knowledge of the local infrastructure problems and can be a real help in informing the city of issues prior to project design, engineering, and budgeting. I would have even happily contributed financially to the project if my flooding issues could have been alleviated. Secondly, as some of you know, I've been trying to get information about existing infrastructure in Shark Park. This weekend, I stumbled across a report on the city website from 2011 titled "City of Pacifica Collection System Master Plan", which is an analysis of the conditions of the city's stormwater and sewage infrastructure all over town. Page 21 shows Monterey Road sewers, half of which are color-coded red, indicating high priority for replacement with major structural defects. I asked Ryan Marquez about this today, and he was not aware of this report. He said usually the infrastructure was replaced in the year prior to repaving. I asked four of my neighbors who have all lived here since this report was written 10 years ago, and none of them recall the sewer lines being replaced. This brings me to my second question. Who is responsible for overseeing city-funded projects and ensuring that reports that the city paid consultants lots of money to repair are actually being used? How are the records organized and shared so that the pertinent city staff has access in doing their work? Now that Monterey Road has been repaved, how long do we have to wait for ongoing sewage and stormwater issues to be fixed? And where is the accountability for this mismanagement? I've only started paying attention to city government issues since October of last year, and already I've encountered several expensive reports that the city has authorized and paid for that it then ignores. For example, the Howard Donnelly report done in 1983 that studied the 475 landslides that occurred that winter in Pacifica where lives were lost, called for updating the general plan hazard maps for landslides. Thirty-seven years later, that work has still not been done. Similarly, studies for Beach Boulevard have been done several times over many years, and some of that information is currently being ignored. How can we as citizens help keep the city accountable to its use of our limited funds so that the money can go to actual improvements and not just more studies? Thank you.
All right, let's see. Thank you. Are there additional comments on this item?
I see Lisa suddenly appeared on video there, and I don't know if council wants to direct her to contact Ms. Bowles about that.
Well, I think we have to finish public comment on the item, and I think I saw another hand go up, but now it went down. So I just want to complete that really quick, Mike, if possible. City clerk, Assistant City Clerk, can you please check and see if this is regarding item five on the consent?
Hello, please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Summerlee. And yes, it is for item five.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just a neighbor on Monterey Road, and I can't say better than what Christine Bowles just said, but I agree wholeheartedly, and I read the same 2011 report that said that the sewage line coming down Monterey was a high priority to be fixed back then. And it's, it was beautiful to see Monterey Road repaved, but a shame if it was repaved without the sewage being addressed. So that I don't want to repeat much of what Christine said very well, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments from the public on this item? All right, and seeing no further comments, I'm going to bring it back for staff and council cons. Did, Ms. Peterson, did you have comments?
Yes, thank you very much. Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding this item. First of all, I did want everybody to know, the council and the residents, that those sewer repairs were taken care of on Monterey Road. Those were done between 2012 and 2015. So it was, it was a while ago, but they were taken care of. Additionally, the sewer was inspected by our wastewater division right before the project started and was found to still be in good condition. So there is no concerns regarding that. I did also want to mention that this is a pavement rehabilitation project that happened on Monterey Road. On those types of projects, the funding is really prioritized for increasing the condition of the pavement, the asphalt pavement that's on the road to get that into good condition. There currently is an unfunded project for Monterey Road for drainage improvements. That project has been on the city books. It is unfunded currently. It currently also is unscoped, but it's important to note that the city is moving forward with a storm drain master plan project that's going to be going out. A request for proposals from engineering firms that should be going out by the end of this month. And we'll be taking proposals from engineering firms. We'll be reviewing those proposals, ultimately selecting, taking that back to council to select a engineering consultant to complete an assessment of all of the city's storm drain needs, including the needs on Monterey Road. And so once that study is complete, we will come back to council, allow council to understand what the extent is of the storm drain needs in the city and also the costs of those improvements, and discuss also how to fund those improvements. So I just wanted to give everybody that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say I move to approve item number five on the consent calendar.
One second.
City clerk.
Item number five was moved by O'Neil and seconded by Beer. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlas.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number five passes with a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. And now we'll move to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All remarks shall be addressed to the council, excuse me. Councilmembers shall enter into debate, shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 1, Section 2-1.118, any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, myself, and if such conduct continues, may, at the direction of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from the further audience before the council during this meeting. All right, so we'll have oral communications, and I'm checking for hands from the audience on items not on the agenda. I see three hands so far. City clerk, if you would like to proceed.
Yes, our first speaker will be Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, and before I begin my actual comments, I want to make a quick thank you to the city and recology for improved trash collection of cans in the manner of business directors. I'm a Pacific Beach Coalition volunteer, and I'm grateful to find empty cans as I pick up debris in our city streets, so I really appreciate your efforts. Again, my name is Suzanne Moore. I am a sitting board member for Healthcare of the Homeless and Farm Workers Program, but tonight I'm speaking just for myself. At a recent Healthcare for the Homeless Board meeting, our chair, Brian Greenberg, reported on Redwood City's new safe parking program, which currently houses 45 families and elders, and just welcomed two newborns into the community. Dr. Greenberg also commented that their program received many inquiries from vehically housed outside of Redwood City, and our chair suggested that every community step up to assist their unhoused. I'm aware that more federal and state monies will be available to our communities that step forward to meet this challenge. I need to remind this council that Pacifica has not only declined to do their part, but worsened the problem by implementing the oversized vehicle ordinance without simultaneously creating a safe parking program. I implore city and council to reconsider this course. Our oversized vehicle ordinance has displaced vehically unhoused to other communities to push them away from established friends, family, and social support. The oversized vehicle ordinance has caused true suffering in the midst of a pandemic. Its enforcement should be immediately halted while a safe parking alternative is sought. This pandemic has made clear that our community is interdependent. The county acknowledges that some essential workers are unhoused. There are successful models of safe parking that provide respite and a path to permanent housing. Pacifica can do its part. This new council and this new year provides new opportunities. Please halt enforcement of the oversized vehicle ordinance and work with our Board of Supervisors to create a safe parking alternative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Claire Irvin Lee, who will be followed by Gloria Stofan. Claire, please state your name for the record.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
This is Claire Irvin Lee. I live on Grand Avenue in Pedro Point. We have a problem with trees that need to be trimmed, and we had a particular situation just today. As I was, if any of you are familiar with the area, it's very hilly. We have a, a large hill is on Grand Avenue. And right towards the bottom of the hill, there was a huge tree branch that blew, that blew down today and was almost entirely blocking the street. This isn't the first time it's happened, and it's not going to be the last time until some of those trees get either removed or properly trimmed. I know of one that has, that there's been a problem with. I can give you the address, 1364 Grand Avenue. And I know that the residents of that house have repeatedly asked the, the city person in charge of getting the tree trimmed or removed to have that done. It's riddled with termites. It's, in addition to dropping branches during storms, which are happening right now, it also has lifted the sidewalk so that it's very difficult for a person walking along not to trip unless they're paying a great deal of attention. And particularly in the evening hours, the street is not well-lighted, so you won't, you won't see it unless you're aware of it. And that's, that's a problem on the entire, that entire side of the street because most people there have sidewalks. So I'm, my suggestion and hope that it gets some attention is to take care of some of those trees that are dropping branches and have caused damage for the last few years. Thank you.
Gloria Stofan, you're our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers and city staff. My name's Gloria Stofan, longtime resident of Pacifica and a member of Faith in Action Bay Area. Well, there's a new council and it's a new year. I still have hope that Pacifica can provide for those that are unhoused and living in vehicles or motorhomes, a safe parking option, home and a safe parking option in Pacifica. I, I am curious. I do have a question. I believe it was in November that Sue Walterlas brought up the purchasing of a few spots in the San Francisco Trailer Park. And I was wondering if anything came of that. I know you can't answer me, but I was hoping maybe that could be brought up at some other time. I'm asking that Pacifica City Council workers, council members, continue to work with the Pacifica Resource Center and also with the Board of Supervisors for a safe parking program to exist in the city. I'm optimistic that there will be new funding for such programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita Reese, you're our next speaker. You'll be followed by Cheryl Dickinson. Anita, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Anita Reese, and I'm with the Pacifica Resource Center. And I want to thank the city and the community for your ongoing support while we continue to respond to the continuing pandemic and its impact on Pacifica residents. And due to the, the recent surge in COVID cases in our community, our office is still closed to the public and will be through the, through January. We expect to open again with modified hours in February. We are, however, in the office and available to provide emergency services in person. All other services are being done by phone or virtually. Groceries are available during our drive-through on Wednesdays and at the parking lot at the American Legion, which is at 555 Buell. If you need groceries, please contact PRC to sign up for an appointment time. Otherwise, folks can go to the drive-through after 3:30 and pick up groceries as soon as we can get them through the line. We can also, we can be reached by phone at 650-738-7470, by email at info@pacresourcecenter.org, or at our website at pacresourcecenter.org. We're also hosting the county's mask mobile during our grocery drive-through this week. So it'll be at 555 Buell on Wednesday, the 27th, beginning at 2:00 PM. Folks can stop by and grab a mask while they, while they last. PRC continues to help folks who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage. Earlier today, the governor announced that the state plans to extend Earlier today, the governor announced that the state plans to extend the moratorium through June. Over that, over the next five-month period, renters are required to pay at least twenty-five percent of their rent. And as I learn more, I'm happy to share that information. In the meantime, if any renter or homeowner needs help paying their rent, their January or any past due rent or mortgage, they can contact PRC by phone, email, or our website. We will continue to prioritize emergency financial assistance to meet the guidelines of the eviction moratorium as soon as we know more information. The beginning of tax season has been postponed to February eighth. However, we do plan on, on collecting tax return intakes and materials starting on the thirtieth of January by appointment. Taxes will be prepared by drop-off or by uploading information online. And I expect to share more information next time as we continue to finalize our plans. In addition to this work, we continue to provide our unhoused on the coast outreach work. Please contact our UC Outreach staff by email at ucutreach@packresourcecenter.org or by calling Daniel Gardner at six five zero five seven five four eight six one if you know or see someone who's living on the streets in an encampment or in a vehicle. And again, we can be reached at the office at six five zero seven three eight seven four seven zero or by email or our website at packresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Dickinson. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Cheryl Dickinson. I live in Lindemar. And I wanted to say thank you to the city council for your service and Happy New Year. I'm actually calling tonight to continue on press on about fireworks. It's January and every July, we, you know, August, we speak up and we say, okay, we're going to do something. And then the months slip by. So I really wanted to emphasize that illegal fireworks are a huge problem, especially in the Lindemar area. They're lit off all year round, except lately it's been quiet because of the weather, which is wonderful. I love the rain. But it's really a, a serious problem, you know, especially on Fourth of July and New Year's and ballgames and things. But just to have these constant bombs going off, it's, it's just, you know, it's horrendous. The fire danger, insurance policies canceled. Veterans, my pets, myself. I really actually started suffering from PS, how do you say it? PTSD last July, Fourth of July, we had two days of fireworks. And I was hearing bombs going off in my head for a whole week. So we need to do something about this. It's very dangerous. I, I just want to encourage the city council to consider bringing this up on the agenda and getting the police department involved to find better ways to enforce illegal fireworks. I'm not so concerned about, you know, once a year, safe and sane, but if it takes, you know, removing those from our environment as well to get a handle on this, that's fine by me. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, we've had another hand raised by Anastasia Prisagney. Please state your name for the record.
No, I'm unmuted. I think you can hear me. My name is Linda. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, good, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to talk about the safe parking program that it comes up every meeting. And I know it's taken a lot of time and people there are talking to a new city council in a new year. I would like to ask that you please don't have any closed meetings in regards to a safe parking program. And I think that a lot of the, the trouble with that is that it was trying to normalize parking homes in front of other homes, you know, RVs in front of, of, in, in neighborhoods. And I think that a, the program needs to have a dedicated place. I've, I, I can't emphasize enough with toilets and shower facilities. You know, not just lining neighborhood streets. Please don't return to that idea. I'd love to, to, to see solutions, but I think everybody knows, you know, from the deadlock that happened before, that the, the, the approach didn't work for the community. It needs to be open meetings and, you know, and a real long-term solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? I am not seeing any further hands raised. We'll give it another twenty-two and a half seconds. It doesn't appear, I know that's not quite twenty-two and a half seconds, but it doesn't appear that we have any further public comment. So I'm going to bring it back to council for council communications. I see council member Big Stick and then council member Vatterlos.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I attended a handful of meetings between then and now. I sat in, in the audience on the economic development meeting. And I know we're talking about it later tonight, so I'm, just wanted to say I'm excited about what's going to be presented. Things I was actually active in, there was a study session with Peninsula Clean Energy regarding joining a JPA with other community choice aggregations. It's been a robust discussion specifically about maintaining our values regarding workers' rights and environmental values before our, what's called CCA, Community Choice Aggregation, would join into a joint powers authority with other CCAs. So that's on the horizon. I think we'll be voting on that on Thursday. I'll keep you abreast. I attended the emergency preparedness meeting on Wednesday night. There was so much good discussion, it's hard to encapsulate it in the short time to try and convey things to y'all. But Captain Clements, first of all, put together a wonderful presentation about the CERT program. When trainings become active again, if time allows, I'm personally interested in participating. I was convinced by his presentation. And so I'm looking forward to garnering engagement from the community when that class becomes available again, because it's wonderful to have a, a community emergency response team available. There was also a robust, robust discussion revolving around fire safety. What I took away from it was my homework personally is to start learning about weed abatement, what ordinance we have on the books, if any, and bring it back if we don't. And so that, that was the major takeaway from that discussion that I got from there. In that same vein, I've been interested because a lot of the community is concerned about fire. And frankly, having a fire season that now doesn't seem to be over, or maybe it is now that we actually have some rain, is kind of terrifying on top of the rest of the terror. So that's been a focus of mine and I'll be meeting with North County Fire Authority tomorrow to start learning about that and what maybe we can do. In the meantime, you know, it behooves owners to look at personal defensive space around their own home to make sure that in their own immediate area, they've done due diligence as a, an owner to get rid of what's immediately there and everyone to have a, just a plan in place. If heaven forbid, there's an evacuation, I have no doubt that our, our emergency responders will be able to get us out. If you happen to have a packed bag, it just runs smoothly. So that being said, in terms of the personal responsibility chunk, I'm diligently seeking everything I can regarding the rest of what city might be able to do. And tomorrow night, there's going to be an emergency drill at Lantos Tunnel between ten PM and four AM. So the tunnel is going to be closed between ten and four tomorrow night, if you were planning on going anywhere. That's most of what I had to report on. If, it, it all seems appropriate through the mayor. If city manager might say a word or two about that yoga studio. I know that's been kind of a hot button topic in town lately and knowing a little about what's going on there might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vatterlos.
Hey, I attended the Fairmont Homeowners Association, which is in my district, and they asked a lot of really good questions, which were answered. Some of the things they'd like to see were suggested also. I went to City and County Association of Governments and mainly we appointed people to committees. There are various committees through there and Mayor Pro Tem Beer was selected to be on the Bike and Ped Committee. Mary and I did the town hall ad hoc, which will be talking about later for COVID information. I went to the Democrats where Mike spoke. Look, this is all. I went to the regular county meeting, which is always so full of information. I have pages of notes. I am on the Office of Emergency Services Council for the county. And we talked a lot about fire issues, but my big thing is the emergency alerts. They think this is satisfactory, but only fifteen percent of people in Pacifica subscribe to the SMC alerts. It's really simple. Go to SMC Alert, sign up and you'll get messages. When people say they hadn't, didn't hear about this tunnel closure or whatever else, we've been getting notices about it on the SMC alerts for a couple of weeks. They have really good information and it's good for everybody. I went to flood and sea level rise committee today and they did approve sending a letter to the state interested in a five point five billion dollar bill, which is for wildfire, safe water, drought, and flood protection. I also listened to the open space committee, but I have a couple of things from the recovery council. It's interesting that things change daily. On Friday, we were told that there were ten thousand two hundred and thirty-one cases over the last thirty days. Today, on the county, which is behind a little bit, in the hospitals, we have a hundred and fifty-seven people in the hospital COVID positive. Eighteen acute care beds are empty and seven ICU beds are empty. We have eighty-eight surge beds for ICU and a hundred and eight surge acute care beds. Those beds right now cannot be used because we don't have staff, but we do have the beds available if we could get the staff. In Pacifica, one thousand and twenty-three people are positive, which have been tested positive, excuse me, which is two hundred and sixty-two people per ten thousand. That sounds kind of high, but it's not at all. We're in the low level range for all of the other cities. I also want to say that San Mateo had the very first drive-through COVID vaccination at the fairgrounds. And I believe nine thousand nine hundred healthcare workers were vaccinated in one day. That was not this Saturday. It was the prior Saturday. They're still working on it. I've tried through Kaiser, but they are only, Kaiser is telling me that they are only still in the process of vaccinating healthcare workers. So the, this county has a vaccination committee, which is together to disseminate information and to try to make people more comfortable with the fact that you can get a vaccine. When the time comes, you can get a vaccine and that it is safe and effective. And that is the main purpose for that committee. And you can look that up on the SMC Health site. And with that, I am completed.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
I thought, I thought Mary was, yeah.
I can't see your hand. I didn't see you indicate.
I didn't put a hand up.
Oh, well then let's have a report from Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everybody. It's good to be here tonight. I attended several meetings, just like everybody else. So on January thirteenth, Mike and I attended the Joint Articulation Meeting, which is a meeting that brings together the both school districts, the city and the water, North Coast County Water. It's a really good opportunity for everyone to kind of hear about what's going on and get on the same page about things. Jefferson Union High School District talked about their housing, so they're creating staff housing and it's going up right now. And you can see it up at Ceremonie Del Rey. If you pull up to go to Ceremonie there, you can see it. It's coming. So it's really exciting. Then they're going to be doing market rate housing to be built on the property at Ceremonie Del Rey. Pacifica School District basically is just, just doing everything they can to respond to COVID. Actually, both school districts said that almost everything they're doing is COVID response, you know, and trying to help their teachers and students. So I always like going to that meeting. I attended the town hall ad hoc meeting with council member Vatterlos, which we're going to talk about that tonight. I attended the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project Ad Hoc Meeting. That's a mouthful. And we're planning for the presentation for the third workshop, which is happening on February fourth. I did hop on the call, the county call, and like council member Vatterlos said, there is a ton of information. And I'm happy to actually like, like write some of that up or something because there's just so much that it's hard to get through in, in a, like, like this. So I'm happy to write up my notes, is what I'm saying. And then I attended my very first open space meeting. It was really interesting. And they have a lot to talk about and they have a lot that they want me to talk about tonight. So the first thing that we talked about was the GG NRA gave updates and they're talking about the restrooms out at Maury Point. So the restrooms had been closed, then they got opened, then they got vandalized. So now they're closed again. And so that's a bummer that people are out there vandalizing our bathrooms. There's a lot of talk about Maury Point and I'll get to that in one minute. They also spoke about the memorial on the berm, that it's not allowed out there. However, they were trying to find very sensitive ways to address the issue. And that was, that was how it was left. So they didn't talk about actually taking it down. They talked about naming the trailhead at the top of Cattle Hill. There's, at the top of Cattle Hill, there's like a mile section in between the parking lot and Sweeney Ridge. And so they have an ad hoc committee that's looking at names and they've been meeting with the Ramatouche elders to try to get some names together. So that was pretty cool, actually. And now Maury Point. So this is the base, the, the bulk of their whole meeting. So the Fairway Park community has come out. It's really hard for them when there's so many folks going to Maury, to Maury's Point because of parking. So they want to address the parking. They want to address the garbage, which I think recology is doing and actually a really great job of, of that. And so they talked about that too. The traffic and people crossing the highway from the other side of Fairway Park to get over to Maury Point. So there's a whole lot of conversation that needs to happen around just Maury Point in general. And so they were looking at creating some kind of either an ad hoc group or a city-led group. They were mentioning that if that could be possible, because there's a few players that need to be involved. It would be GG NRA, the parks, the city of Pacifica, Caltrans. I know I'm missing one, Public Works, the San Francisco Park and Rec, and the Coastal Commission. So that's like a lot of different agencies and to bring them all together is a really big job. And so I suggested that they came to our goal-setting session and talk about it there. Because if we're going to dive into something like that, it has to, has to be well planned. And there's so many other things on our work plan right now. They're also very concerned, council member Big Stick, about fire safety and open space and who's actually responsible for that defendable space around their homes. So they were really interested in that too. And then they talked about a chipping service. I guess there's like a hundred and fifteen addresses in Valimar that are going to benefit from a chipping service that will come and chip the, the trees after they're cut down. So that's really great. I think that's it for me. I think that's it for me.
Yeah, Mike. Thank you very much.
Okay, um I was just to see, going back to my calendar here to see what I did. Now I went to a couple of meetings, some of which I did go to the Joint Articulation Committee. Um I did want to thank um the two school districts through that meeting. They agreed to send um the Economic Development Committee work um on a whole directory of all the restaurants in Pacifica that are open for takeout. And the two school districts agreed to send this list out to all to their database, which is, you know, parents and people in Pacifica. And then the city also sent that same list out in our connect with Pacifica email that we sent out every um Friday. And Kevin sent us a report that apparently we can actually see how many people open it. And if I remember right, it was something like we usually get about a fifty percent. And Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't usually get a real high percentage of attachment openings, but we had over a hun- we usually get around fifty. We had over a hundred and eighty there. So I want to thank those citizens that opened that and did the and did what we hoped you would do, and that is open it up, call a restaurant and order takeout and and or delivery. Because the restaurants really are desperate. They need to be able to try to survive, get past this. I mean, if you love could love Pacifica, these are the people that donate to the schools for their auctions, the Little Leagues for prizes or whatever, you know, these are the P- these are the restaurants. You you don't get them from like the big chain stores like um some of the stuff up at Ceremonie Outback and stuff like that, but you do get them from the little mom and pop groceries, um restaurants that are in Pacifica. So I want to thank the school districts publicly for helping us out with that. I also want to thank Kevin for putting it in our meeting and our mailer and all those people especially that opened it up. Hopefully they printed it out and called a restaurant, dialed for dinner. We uh got elected today to the chairman of the County Congestion Management Environmental Quality uh board or commission or committee. Um I also tuned in to through my other um affiliation, I turned into the uh budget call that the governor, that the schools had for regarding the governor's budget. And there was good news is, you know, Sierra California's um income tax is really, it budget is very dependent on income tax. And every time there's an IB IPO, they make money. So fortunately Airbnb went IPO this year, so they had a fifteen billion dollars extra of um money in the state budget, which is being allocated some to wildfire uh management and some, you know, to do maybe some controlled berms and stuff like that. Also attended the LAFCO meeting and the LAFCO board um agreed to let the San Mateo County Resource Management I'm forgetting, district um annex part of Pacifica. And so I've asked Kevin to put them on as an agenda item so that they can tell everybody what they do. Um presently, they're in Pacifica measuring the water quality in San Pedro Creek, but they are have taken kind of the lead role in the um cutting down of trees in the area from the fire down in South County. So they are working on doing some tree mitigation, et cetera, for wildfires. So hopefully, maybe that might be able to help here in Pacifica. So did that, they took a took a COVID test. I came up negative, so some people might be disappointed, but I'm not. So um let's see. Um and let's see, I'm just going through my calendar just to see anything else. Nope, that's LAFCO, Joint Articulation Budget Committee. Nope, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, I've got a few comments and um I'll mention a few meetings that I attended as well. Some of which co-council members attended uh as well. I um one of the highlights that that uh council member Vatalas mentioned was um our Pacifica Democrats meeting. And the highlight of that meeting was, of course, um that council member O'Neil was speaking. But the absolute just just most distressing and upsetting aspect of that meeting was that it was bombed, Zoom bombed by white supremacists. And in light of the um difficult and uh and unacceptable um behaviors that occurred in the nation's capital on January sixth. Um it was immediately after that that this occurred and it was completely shocking. And it was nothing I'd ever experienced. Um I work in a school district and one of our biggest fears starting out with, you know, distance education and distance learning was, you know, what, how to protect the students and Zoom bombing and the threat that this could occur. It just did not occur to me that we would have it happen um during our Democrats meeting. Um so it was quite um dramatic. It was upsetting to me that it actually occurred in the middle of our tribute to Marv Marganti um as well. So we'll have to make sure to go back and and do that in a proper way. Um but what I will say is that, you know, folks put together scrambled and and figured out a way to end the meeting. Um but the the value with this club is for for your speech and an open exchange of ideas. So it's not the club where you're going to get the secret passcode to come to the meeting. Um and so it just requires, you know, when there cannot be civil discourse, it requires additional measures to make sure that the opportunity for free speech is protected. But we have to also now go through extra hoops and and find ways to make that still an open, accessible meeting and yet also protect those who are attending. It was a very upsetting um a stream of profanity of just absolutely unacceptable speech from my point of view and um and and others can comment, but I just um so sorry, Mike, um you were the highlight, but I did have to mention that that was, you know, something that occurred in our community and it was really upsetting to me um as you can tell. So, back to the calendar. Um I did uh also, I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting. We'll be hearing more about that tonight. Um the committee is working really well now that it's fully staffed, if you will, with our um our volunteer committee members from the community. So we'll be hearing more about the plans there, so I won't go into detail. Uh we can have that during our discussion. Let's see, there was, I attended the um vaccine town hall on Facebook Live. It was on Facebook Live and it was on YouTube Live all at the same time. And so it was interesting. I couldn't get the Facebook Live one to work right. So I had the YouTube one going over here. And what I found to be really in insightful and useful, besides the information that was expressed and shared, was the running chatter in the comments um to see what people, you know, people expressing their questions, their concerns. And um and what I saw echoed time and again was, you know, you know, the crying need for information about when is it my turn and how do we know? And and so um I appreciate the offer um that Mayor Pro Tem Beer made and that a council member Vatalas has been bringing forward, you know, and sharing the notes from these various meetings. And so I was gonna ask um the city manager if, you know, to make a little note about uh helping us to find a way to to share that information. Um the the I attended that same day, the county manager's call. Um it's a Zoom meeting for all elected officials and city managers in um the county. So it's quite a large, there's over two hundred people on the call usually and it's one hour and it's every two weeks. So with presentations from Jackie Spear, Kevin Mullen, um uh Josh Becker, depending on who's available and not in legislative session, as well as multiple county departments that want to bring forward the information. It it sometimes is so, it's going so quickly. But we do receive the um the handouts, you know, the the slides that they show and such. So I'm thinking that there's one or two usually slides that are particularly relevant that may be really useful for our community to have. And I know Mayor Pro Tem Beer has been really good about pushing that out through social channels. I haven't been good about that, so I would really like to figure out a way that we can do this collectively. We'll hear more about it later from the subcommittee, perhaps. So um the next meeting of that county manager group won't be until January twenty-seventh, which seems like forever in the way that things are changing all the time. I did a question for, oh, go ahead?
If it's the twenty-seventh, it's Wednesday.
Is that this Wednesday? Is it happening this week? No, it's not. It's the week after. See, that's what I mean. Every week is so much easier for me than every other week and which phase. Anyway, I did want to ask you though, council member Vatalas, um you in your report, you talked about a fire flood and infrastructure resiliency bond, it sounded?
No, it's a um, let me see, let me go back. Senate Bill forty-five.
Okay.
And the Flood Sea Level Rise Committee is sending a letter in support of that. Yeah, SB forty-five.
SB forty-five, thank you.
One, one more small thing since I'm talking. Um I did get um a couple of complaints about the garbage in Pedro Point in the shopping center. And I talked to Recology today and they are working with the city to see if they can get a city garbage can out there. Because there are a lot of businesses that serve food and since all food is to go, there is excessive trash because of it. So they are working with the city and I've heard lots of compliments about Recology and the job they're doing and that the cans are empty almost all the time now. So um it's working out really great. Thank you.
It absolutely is. I'm so thrilled and um and I'll also, just while you're on that note, working closely with our um code enforcement officer around the dumping and and the pickups of the dumped materials, um which of course we don't want to happen, but when it does, to have it cleaned up is is really important. I did attend uh with the city manager, the first meeting of the Coastal Cities Group Leadership Committee for um sea level, so that we were talking about sea level rise, we were talking about. Um and this is through um the League of Cities. So it was a a cross-section of folks from all over the state, a fairly small group. Uh it was just our very first meetings to kind of meet people and and begin to understand their agenda and what the agenda will be going forward. So I'll have more to report on that in the future. That's a monthly meeting, so I'll keep you apprised of that. Um and then I did have a a couple of questions based on our public comment tonight, if I could, for the city manager, um either tonight or soon. Uh if we can have a brief update on any next steps related to the issue of fireworks um that are, you know, coming. Um and then in regard to a member of the public asking about the status of council member Vatalas's excellent suggestion regarding um the Resource Center assisting motorhome dwellers um and a rent and making arrangements there. Perhaps we could reach out to um Anita Reese or get some update on that as well. That would be really beneficial. And I'm sure there's more and I'm gonna stop talking now and give it over to our wonderful staff um for staff communications. Oh, council member Beer, is there something I forgot?
Well, I just saw council member Big Stick, he put his hand up a little while ago, so I just wanted to say.
I thought he was just waving to me like, please stop talking, really, stop. Yes, yes, council member Big Stick.
Before you were talking, it was uh and then you stopped me on your trip, my tracks with your very poignant uh social comment. So uh yeah, um just a brief thing and Mike reminded me and since I was called, I'll say it now. Um I made a point to um get the fried chicken at the Valamar Station, which was um a years-long endeavor, which finally culminated in um getting into that five-minute gap in which it's available, literally. They they let you order it, let you order it at five o'clock and by five oh five, it was done. And I'm somebody who, like, my favorite fried chicken is a thousand miles away in New Orleans. So I'm I'm somebody who adores fried chicken with a passion. And I'll tell you, um this was absolutely amongst some of my favorite fried chicken on the planet instantaneously right here in my backyard, which I had no idea. Um and in lieu of supporting local business and making recommendation, I think I want to start talking about a place I've eaten every week, hopefully in a more timely fashion. But um the Valamar Station quest for fried chicken was beyond worth it. And if you can make that five-minute gap in which you're allowed to order it on a Sunday, do it. It's worth every second.
Thank you for that. City manager Woodhouse.
Great, thank you. Mayor Beth Meyer, Mayor Pro Tem Beer and council members Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, judging from all of the meetings and and input that council members reported out on. The year is definitely off to a roaring and busy start and productive start. So that's wonderful to hear. Uh numerous uh updates that I have. Most importantly, hot off the presses from Caltrans, is I wanted to mention that the 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 Lantos Tunnel closure is because of the weather forecasted for tomorrow night is being postponed until February third. So uh I don't even know that that's been uh put out on social media yet. And we had earlier today regurgitated Friday's announcement about the closure for today. But we were told this afternoon, the city was told this afternoon, and I confirmed with the police chief that uh it is postponed until February third. If by any reason that changes, we'll make sure to get that information out uh tomorrow. You know, if for some reason they go back to it being closed or something, but that's what we uh most recently heard. So I wanted to make sure to mention that. I wanted to uh talk about uh COVID for for a minute and and the good news that uh happened last night and and we pushed out the information today is is that the state uh regional stay-at-home order was lifted. So that returns everyone back to their previous tier they were at. And for us, that's the purple tier and notably a big difference uh between the the governor's previous order and the purple tier is that restaurants can now start doing outdoor dining and and continue takeout. Uh but outdoor dining only and uh other retail ha- can do uh indoor with modifications. Um so the information, again, we put this out. The Department of Public Health has their blueprint for a safer economy that runs through those colors. So I encourage everyone to do that. We um, you know, numerous sources have been pushing that change out today. Uh we did that uh also in a direct email to all the businesses in Pacifica and that's good news on on the COVID front. Let's hope that we can um stay there uh for a little while, if not move to the red tier. So that's that's the goal. I'll mention just briefly because council member Big Stick asked asked for me to uh but that the the county um has uh been granted by a a judge a a temporary restraining order regarding Pacifica Beach Yo- Yoga for that facility to close due to their numerous and ongoing violations. And uh they will be, the county enforcement team will be checking up on them to make sure they're in compliance. So another COVID-related. Uh let me talk just briefly about the storm that's coming. Uh today's winds, um nothing, nothing major uh that that we're aware of that that happened in Pacifica from today's winds. Uh but Tuesday night uh till Thursday is very large, uh you know, atmospheric river type of event coming in with high winds, not as high winds projected predicted in this. And this is from the PG&E forecasting, uh, not as high predicted as occurred, uh, last week. Uh, related to the storms, North County Fire Authority, along with all of the, the regional county, uh, entities are going to be staging, uh, you know, some, some, uh, some auxiliary backups related to, uh, potential mudslides and such in South County related, uh, to the fire areas, uh, because of the storm predictions. Um, but, uh, everybody is, is geared up for anything that, that may happen. Uh, but it is, um, anticipated to be, uh, a large storm. And, and as everyone's realized, a cold storm with snow levels down to two thousand feet. So mentioned that on, uh, the weather front, um, fireworks was, was asked about, uh, it's on the agenda scheduled for February eighth. We are bringing back data, uh, to the council to continue the discussion about the Safe and Same fireworks program. So that's at the next city council meeting. Um, the, uh, SFRV Park was mentioned prior to the holidays. I had, uh, facilitated a couple of meetings with the SFRV Park owners, uh, as well as the county. Uh, nothing to report there, but more, um, more facilitation in meetings and dialogue to occur, uh, soon this year. So that's the update there. And then finally, uh, uh, I'll mention that the, the council goal-setting, virtual via Zoom, again, uh, or not again, but still a year later, we still need to do it by Zoom, is scheduled for Friday, March fifth and Saturday, March sixth. Ten, uh, that's, that's a firm date. The actual, uh, time, timing of those meetings is, uh, to be determined. The mayor and Mayor Protem and I met with the facilitator, um, last week to begin talking about that. And so, uh, goal-setting will be happening in that virtual format this year and we'll make the most of it, uh, through that format. And I believe that completes my updates.
Thank you very much. And, um, I, as we were speaking, I remembered one other thing that I had wanted to ask for and, um, and it would, you know, you're, between you and, um, uh, Director Peterson, um, if we could please, um, have someone take a look at the tree situation on Pedro Point that was mentioned with regard to the wind coming up and all, um, I'm not sure if those are city trees, who maintains them or what, but it seemed like there were some, um, unanswered questions there that I'm hopeful could be addressed. Um, and if there's anything to bring back to us informational-wise, that would be great. But it's more a matter of, let's just make sure the question is answered. Okay. Um, and by, just one last thing. You might have noticed that this, this evening's comments were a little longer than usual. And I want you to understand that isn't a problem for me. Um, I think the time that we have to communicate with each other, all of us, council members, is very limited. And we are liaisons to various committees. We do represent the city. We spent the, you know, item, uh, agenda item last meeting, who's going to be the first, who's going to be the alternate on all these committees for a reason. And that's so that we have the information, we bring the information about Pacifica forward to our partners in the county, but that we also gather information to bring back. And, and that's not just to the public, that's to each other as well. And so this is our time. And I am a fan of giving ourselves the opportunity to ask each other questions and, um, and, and gather and, uh, receive information from each other. So bear with me on that if you're not a fan of that, um, because it's, it's pretty important to me. So that's that. And now we will move on to our consideration items. Isn't that right, City Clerk Coffee?
Yes, next up, uh, we will have, uh, consideration agenda item number eight, the Economic Development Committee work plan for January twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. All right.
Great. Thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. And, uh, in this, uh, interim period for many months, I've been staffing the Economic Development Committee. So I'll be giving the report, uh, about the work plan. Uh, Chair Matthew Doherty wasn't available to attend tonight, sends his regrets regarding that. Uh, but if I don't see any other, uh, EDC committee members in, in the attendee list, but if there were any and they wanted to add to the discussion, uh, certainly they could. But, uh, council liaisons, uh, the mayor, as well as Councilmember O'Neil could also certainly, certainly add. The, the Economic Development Committee, uh, in, in twenty nineteen really worked hard to develop a specific work plan and tasks, uh, that the council then reviewed and approved. And work on that work plan progressed and then the coronavirus interrupted that work plan. And of course, the, the ensuing recession and, and COVID nineteen impacts on businesses really made the EDC step back and recalibrate what its focus needed to be during this time. Also, in late twenty twenty, there were numerous new members appointed by the council to the EDC. So since September of twenty twenty, the committee has really been working hard, dividing up into several subcommittee groups on revamping their work plan. And the product that you have, the recommended, recommended work plan you have in front of you tonight is the result of, uh, three or four months of Economic Development Committee work. And I would note that, that, that the committee at the same time is working on the work plan has really been active, um, in, in many activities. The restaurant list activity was mentioned, uh, you know, the movie night activity. They've been active, uh, to really try to, uh, help out and assist, uh, businesses in Pacifica during this tough time. And they've been working on the, the work plan looking forward. So what, uh, what I'll just briefly summarize, uh, is on the work plan. It has, it has two parts. It has the work plan itself, which has three major categories of tasks. And then the second part are some specific program ideas that they'd like to pursue. And this work plan is really scheduled for kind of the remainder of this fiscal year and for the next fiscal year, because in the spring, they'll be requesting a small budget to support these initiatives. So, um, uh, it, it made sense that the scope of the work plan is really for about the next year and a half. And what it consists of, and it's part of the packet, is the first topic is to promote and market Pacifica to out-of-town visitors to drive tourism revenue. And some subspecifics of that broader work plan task are to strengthen Pacifica's brand by leveraging Pacifica's natural beauty, geographic proximity and other features to enhance the, to EDC, the Economic Development Committee's use of digital platforms. So that would be the vehicle for strengthening the brand, all of the soc- social media, et cetera. Um, and to attract visitors through creation and collaboration or sponsorship of events. For example, the, the drive-in movie night was one. And to really look to actively partner with existing organizations. The EDC, one of the actions they've been taking is tactically participate, uh, to partner with the Chamber of Commerce and Hotel Bid and, you know, Fog Fest and the Beach Coalition. And there's a whole list of potential partners in there, Sanchez Art Center, et cetera. So, uh, that's, that's the, the first part of the work plan. The second is to provide assistance and to support local businesses and the city's economic development program. So again, the first one focused on attracting visitors to Pacifica. Second one focused on supporting the businesses in Pacifica to serve locals as well as visitors. So expand outreach and improve communication to local businesses to identify opportunities to provide and educate about available city and county resources. And right now, a lot of those resources really relate to COVID nineteen survival. Conduct survey and data gathering to understand and address business needs. Improve communication to businesses. Host workshops and other events to support city-led initiatives and events and assist the economic development program with recruitment of new businesses to Pacifica. So that's work plan item two. The third then is promoting local businesses to the residents of Pacifica to encourage residents to spend local, locally and stop retail leakage. That's sort of a term of art in economic development is retail leakage. That is basically, don't buy your gas over the hill, buy your gas in Pacifica. Spend your money, buy your things in Pacifica, spend on resources and services in Pacifica. And, uh, part, parts of that are educating residents on the advantages of spending locally. Launch campaigns and events to build awareness and sense of community and promote utilizing various communication channels and mediums, uh, social media. Again, part of this work plan is there's overlap between these different initiatives, but there, there's, there's strategies for each one of these three. And then again, working with the Chamber of Commerce and other groups on key initiatives to support businesses. So those are the main work plan items. Um, I wasn't going to go through all of the, uh, detail on the, uh, specific program ideas to pursue the work plan. Um, but you know, they do consist of very specific work and attached in the package is actually a presentation, could sort of a proposal put together about how to amplify Pacifica's brand, um, and, uh, program ideas for work plan item two. There's a number of items in there that are more specific. And, uh, then also for item three, the spend by local campaign and, and other, um, other, other ideas. So I, I think I'll, I'll stop there. The goal, uh, what, what's being sought tonight from the council is for the council to endorse the Economic Development Committee's work plan. Tonight is not a budget request from the city, from the council to appropriate related to that. That will be done during the budget development in the spring because the Economic Development Ki- Committee still has some remaining budget that was allocated from last year. Six thousand dollars that was allocated, uh, six out of the seven thousand dollars that was allocated, uh, for this current budget year. So it's not a budget request tonight. It's just to receive input on and approval from the council of the EDC's work plan. That completes my presentation. You have any questions? You're on mute, Sue.
Sorry, I was getting some feedback and I thought maybe it was my microphone. Um, I was just checking to see if there's anything, anyone had hands for public comment. And I don't see any, but I can see that Councilmember O'Neil has something to contribute.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment if anybody in Pacifica wants to look at a really nice website that was put together by the Economic Development Committee, a couple volunteers there. Um, go to Pacifica, visit pacifica.com and, and it's very professional, very good-looking. And, um, I don't think that was done. I think the city's paying the cost of, you know, maintaining the site and that's it. So very good volunteer work on that. So I just wanted people that somebody could go look at and check it out. So that was my only comment.
Thanks, Councilmember O'Neil. I, I will just, uh, uh, correct, uh, not correct, but add the chamber, just to give credit to the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is actually the one that is, uh, hosting and, and maintaining that site.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure who was, to be honest with you.
Yeah, great. Okay, um.
Tiger had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Quick question for Kevin and your point as well taken that we're not discussing the money so much tonight. But, um, you said that six thousand of the allocation from last year hadn't been spent. Is that because they couldn't because of COVID or can you give us just a quick?
Yeah, I think that's it in a nutshell. I mean, uh, uh, that money was budgeted for like events and, you know, present in, you know, and, and, and so, you know, no committees met or commissions met for a long time under COVID. And then when they started to meet, it was really apparent that they needed to focus on, um, the work plan and revamping that as well as immediate actions to help support local businesses. So they did spend a thousand dollars. The city through the EDC sponsored the first, uh, drive-in movie night. Um, but you know, that re- that still leaves the six thousand left that they could spend in implementing these actions. Thank you very much.
Uh, I am seeing a hand. Um, Assistant City Clerk, can you please check? And see if you see the same.
Sue DeGree, did you have your hand raised for this item?
Yes. Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, it's an excellent plan. Um, I think that our brand obviously is ourself. And, uh, under, you do mention how the natural assets are such a allure. And then you put an other, I would recommend that under other, instead of saying an other, that we always put our history, which you did mention. Our history is unique and our cultural aspects are unique. So all three of those together with our small businesses, uh, are ourselves. And so the partnering there, uh, I know that the, the natural history is, the natural elements are there. And of course, the Beach Coalition would be very helpful with, with that. And the history, the Pacifica Historical Society has done wonderful things with our unique and vast history. And of course, the Art Center and Theater, all the, then the music, we, we are unique. And when you go traveling, those are the things you go for. You go for the, whether it's a farm community, you go for the history there. Whether it's a city, you go for the history and culture in those places as well as for the food. So I would recommend spelling those things out and really being bold about the partnership with those things. And, uh, I think so far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. All right. I don't see any of the further hands on this. Any other council questions or comments on this? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Um, yeah, thank you for, to the Economic Development Committee. I appreciate this. Um, there was one part where you said that you're going to be rebranding and then only, um, posting on Instagram twice a month. So I would encourage to post more than twice a month, just, just a little encouragement there. And then, I don't know why, but this hit me when we're talking about bringing visitors, um, to our city. Um, for some reason, I, I have started thinking about safety because of the waves. And I, I don't know if that can be woven in somehow, just to keep that message going all the time. Cause people come here, but they don't understand, you know, um, the dangers of the ocean. So not to make it like danger, but you know, just so they're safe.
Yes, excellent. Good points. Are you getting notes on that, um, City Manager? Yeah, great, wonderful. And Councilmember Big Stick?
Um, I just wanted to echo what, um, Sue DeGree was saying about, uh, you know, I was struck at the first point in the entirety of the plan, straight out the gate. They really, um, emphasize our natural, historical and cultural, uh, values in order to bring people in to, to come to our businesses. So I, I was, um, impressed and happy to see that. And, um, when I attended the meeting the other night, it was a really energetic group and I'm happy to endorse this plan, knowing the kind of energy that's going into this plan.
Thank you very much. Um, I do want to make an additional note on, on what Mayor Protem said. Uh, in regard to, um, you some aspects of, of what we're seeing play out a little in Maury Point area. Um, and how we have that intersection of the visitors, but we also have our residents and, um, in, we're seeing, I don't, you know, I don't know the, I don't personally know the whole timeline and everything with the GG NRA, but they're, you know, a machine as far as being able to promote and put out, you know, these are our trails, these are all the places you can go. And I, I'm not sure if I'm accurate in this, it's a perception that I have that there, there was an increase as they became more entrenched with the Maury. As they became more entrenched with the Maury Point area in the bathrooms and the trail improvements, et cetera. So um along the same lines in terms of the trash um issue. That particular location is not, to my knowledge, part of. Um, I mean, I'm getting off topic here, but I just wanted to make a comment about, you were saying about recology and all of that. And so when we, when we're inviting visitors into the community and we're really wanting to to um bring that nexus together for our economic development. There are these other considerations that we need to, whether it's another committee we reach out to, whether it's City Manager bringing it back. Um, we want to make sure that we we have both.
You know, um, in previous issues, one of the problems that we were facing is that. We were part of the GG NRA, but all they were promoting was Marin and San Francisco, not us. Farther south, because if I am correct, the GG NRA actually goes all the way down to. Beyond Devil's Slide to that Rancho. Um, there's a Rancho del Coral or something like that down there that's part of GG NRA. And then we really talked to them about trying to promote us. And even potentially trying to see if we could get a visitor center down here at the South End. So maybe it's almost a case, uh, now we always hear every weekend, the road is crowded, it's full congestion. You know, maybe we are a victim of our success.
Well, you know, the chair of the congestion management committee may have, just a thought, I don't know.
Right, now they just talk about over the hill. And then that hill is not Maury Point, so.
Okay, anything further on this? All right, let's move on to our next item.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I believe we need a a vote on this item.
Oh, we have to vote to approve it or to them accept it.
Still moved.
Yeah, approved.
I approve, so I make a motion to approve the work plan as stated.
I'll second.
Seconded by uh moved by O'Neil, seconded by Big Stick. Uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number eight passes with the vote of five to zero.
Great, moving on. To item nine. Have we nineteen question and answer session with council members? And this is our subcommittee. Um, and did you want to start us off, um, City Manager?
Sure, yeah, I can introduce the item and then the subcommittee and ad hoc committee members should certainly chime in. But following the direction from council from the last meeting about taking up this topic and appointing. The ad hoc committee, which consisted of uh Mayor Protem Beer and Councilmember Vatterlos. Um, the ad hoc committee did meet uh the Friday before uh a week ago, I guess, before the agenda went out. And discussed the concept of different communication tools to be continuously gain information out. About COVID nineteen to the community in sort of another format in addition to the way we we do it currently. One of the concepts that was raised was, you know, having one big town hall meeting with lots of experts there to provide that information. But really where the ad hoc committee arrived at and and it did also consist, I should mention. Uh, of Deputy City Clerk Executive Assistant Elizabeth Brooks and Chief Stidle and PBNR Director. Mike Perez and uh and myself. And we uh brainstormed that maybe because of continuing uncertainty and quick evolving nature. Of information about vaccinations and, you know, health orders, et cetera. It's a day-to-day, week-to-week thing still. That maybe a good tool would be the periodic um in per-. Virtually a meeting with an expert on a specific topic, like once every two weeks. Uh, to have for an hour for people to join and ask questions about specific topics. So what is in and kind of the question for the council tonight is. There's a number of items there, you know, what are the priority topics that we want to focus on? How many sessions or topics should be planned? Confirm days and times of sessions. And do council members want to team up in twos? To do these sessions with a subject matter expert or individually with a subject matter expert? Um, so those are, those are some of the topics to be discussed. And then the ad hoc committee has some recommendations about that. I think I'll just stop there and turn it over to Mayor Protem or Councilmember Vatterlos, uh, if you'd like to add to that.
I'll go ahead. Oh, no, Sue, you go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Mary.
Uh, you know, the whole idea about this is is to just be visible to our community, sharing information with. You know, people that we can bring in who know more than we do, right? And and on a regular basis, just just be seen and then give the community an opportunity to ask questions. And that process can be um fielded by our city staff. So city staff would be helping us to like, you know. Set of the platforms and go through questions, things like that. Um. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited if if about doing it. And I guess I would like to hear from you all if you would be excited about doing it too and what that could look like. Um, Sue, did you want to add?
Um, we did talk about maybe holding it like at lunch hour on a Friday, twelve to one. Um, well, lo- like um City Manager said, rotating speakers, rotating council members. And questions with council, any kind of, you know, we could come up with a hundred different names. Um, but something where people could phone in and come in on their computer. Because we realized that um the options for certain people, some people can only phone. So um, we wanted to keep it open to as many people coming as possible.
It would be like a Zoom platform on to Facebook Live. And then, you know, how many times a month do we want to do it? Do you want to do it twice a month or once a month? Like these kind of questions, we can kind of bounce back and forth.
Um, I'm willing to support it any way I can. Um, Fridays from twelve to one are not good for me though. I'm sorry, I, you know, so if you did it from like one to two or something, I understand why you want to do it lunch hour. I think we should maybe try one or two and market, you know, the hell out of it and see what our response is. And maybe just pick two topics that we feel are probably the most important or most the hottest topics. So um, that's that. And I'd be happy to partner with another council member, you know, for a couple times and then we kind of. Review and see how it goes type of thing. So.
Uh, Councilmember Big Stick.
Uh, what?
I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You kind of like cut out for a sec.
Coming in and out. I can play with the, okay, I can always play with the sound settings if it goes back again. Um, my first thought when I was reading it was that noon to one might be too early for a lot of people. I feel like that's kind of one of the reasons why we have a lot of meetings in the evening time is so that when folks are home from work. They'll be able to come in and, you know, if it's something I like about vaccinations, that's definitely something I would want to. Um, be viewing as a member of the public if not participating actively as a council member. Personally, my own work schedule is, you know, until five o'clock in the evening. Um, I can work with anything and make requests in terms of participating, because I'd I'd love to participate. Um, but if that's my normal work schedule and I'm thinking others might want to tune in for something as major as vaccinations when we're holding. A session, um, we might consider some time after people's time of work, whatever that might be translated as meaning.
Um, just a question is, if you're doing it in a Zoom format, it can be recorded. And is it possible to host it where someone can, we do it, let's say, on a Friday afternoon, twelve to one. But then it's recorded and people go view it at their convenience. Is that technically? I'm sure it's technically possible, but can we do it?
It's tech- technically possible and we want to have an interaction, right? So we want as as many people to be able to interact with us as as possible too.
Well, they interact from twelve to one and then if they can't make the twelve to one, then they watch it.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of getting the information, accessing the information.
Yeah, it's just getting the information out there is the goal.
And I'm wondering, um, my question on that was, um, if someone couldn't attend that time slot. But had a question they wanted addressed, is there a a process or um some kind of way? A question can be submitted that could be addressed in the session and then um it would be there. And I I'm seeing the city clerk reminding me very kindly that we need to have um the opportunity for public comment.
Read my lines.
Too far down the road in deliberation here. Um, and so I think we've gone through the questions, the needed questions council members have.
Mayor, if if I could just respond to those two questions that were just raised. Uh, one was, yes, the ad hoc committee talked about when we advertise it, people can submit questions in advance. Actually, that would be great because then the subject matter expert kind of knows and can prepare, you know, uh, a- as well as the council members. Um, and then uh in terms of posting the recording, I'll defer to City Clerk Coffee. Uh, but I do believe that's possible for us to post on YouTube or whatever for it to be watched at a later time.
Yes, um, we can post, we can record the Zoom uh content if we uh. Host this by Zoom and then post the recorded content.
Great. Um, I did have one other question and I'm I'm well, you know, um mindful of public comment as well. I'm not seeing any hands raised. But I did want to ask for clarification on on page, packet page seventy-seven. Item number four, um F, County COVID nineteen Recovery Council Priorities. Is that referencing the council that you're part of? Um, Councilmember Vatterlos?
Sorry, that was just one of the topics that we could have.
Is that, is that the count, the Recovery Council? Is that the group that you're part of? Is that what you're?
That, that is the group I'm part of, the Recovery Co- SMC COVID Recovery Council.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call for public comment or questions, you know, that we can't really respond to, but we could certainly listen. And take in. And I'm not seeing hands. So I think there isn't any public comment on this item. So we need to make a decision about timing and how we want to proceed. I like Councilmember O'Neil's suggestion about kind of planning for a couple of them maybe as a start. Thoughts?
That's, that's fine with me. I mean, if we do a couple and we don't get anyone, then it obviously didn't work. But it may take, you know, three or so to get people up to speed to know that we have this available.
Yeah, good point. It would, I would recommend that we do it at least three or four times because just, yeah, at least three times.
No, that's fine. I'm I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Almost like a speaker series concept, just I'm thinking of it, where the topics are delineated, the date is known. So that one could see the list and go, oh, I don't need to know about that, but I'm interested in this. Is that what you had in mind?
Yeah. Yes, yes. Kind of like coffee with a cop, but you know, with.
Java with Jerry, yes.
I mean, we can think of a nice name for it. And actually, I know, um.
Chat with COVID, yeah.
I know Elizabeth had a lot of input. Would it be okay for her to also pop in, Kevin?
Of course.
She's also excited.
Yay. Hello, councilmembers.
Hello.
Hello. Would you mind just commenting on on, because you were excited about this concept, so maybe you could share that excitement? He's gone.
Poor woman on the spot.
Scared her away.
The internet.
While while she's getting, while she's getting back on, um, there she is.
That's going to happen again. My computer's been doing that the whole meeting. I'll say as much as I can. Um, I think council members covered the general gist, I thought, to achieve the goal of. Having the interactive Q and A with council members, something like we've been discussing would be great, sort of like a. Like Councilmember or Mayor Protem Beer said, coffee with a cop or Java with Jerry, something like that. And um by making it available, I think we talked about being able to do Zoom webinar. Streaming through Facebook Live so that you capture as many people through different. Venues as you can. And then we talked like you have already about it being viewable for later for people who were at work. And weren't able to make it, but there's. But they're able to view it later.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll not be able to view me later. It's going to keep happening, but.
Elizabeth, just a question is, um, having never set one up. Um, is it possible to get the same Zoom link uh for every meeting, for every chat?
Yes.
Okay, so.
The answer is yes to that.
Yes.
Yeah, um, so maybe I just have a suggestion or I don't know if we need a motion or if we're just giving direction is. Why don't we just have the subcommittee and maybe work with Elizabeth and come up with the dates? And if you need me to be there, I'll try to be there. Um, and maybe even look to this and, you know, kind of take it off on the Java with Jerry and coffee with cop. Maybe this could almost be a regular part of council duties, then maybe we change it to city but council, you know, budget. Is and is coming up would be an ideal thing. Um, you know, what's the status of the peer? You know what I mean, to open it up for other discussions, because it won't need to be Brown Act or noticed. Because there's only at most two council members on the on the meeting.
You know, that came up at the ad hoc committee and I'll I'll uh chime in, but the city attorney may want to also. The the issue with talking about topics that are going to come before the council would would be a brown and uh problem. So in responding to uh questions about COVID and, you know, these are, these are not issues that the city is going to be deciding about typically. But if we're talking about policy matters, answering questions about budget or whatever. Those are topics that would be coming before the council. So you, it's, it it gets into a gray area with the Brown Act to have council members. Publicly interacting on those.
So by that interpretation, if I want to do a Facebook Live or a meeting. And just say, hey, anybody can call me Wednesday afternoons at three o'clock. And they talk to me about issues, you're saying I can't talk to them about city issues, the city budget. If they ask or how I feel about, you know, painting the pier purple or whatever.
If I could just chime in, I I think the issue isn't with individual council members speaking to their constituents. Individually. The issue comes in when you want to have organized. Meetings or, you know, ad hoc meetings or or, you know, question and answer sessions where you have designated council members. Who are going to be attending. So if you have two council members who are going to be attending these um live sessions. That's fine. The issue comes in when you have more than, you you have. Changing partners, so to speak. Because then you'll have potentially a quorum of council members talking about the same thing. And it is very hard to monitor that when you just say it'll be the mayor and vice mayor this week. And it is very hard to monitor that when you just say it'll be the mayor and vice mayor this week. It'll be the mayor and council member D next week. So you can see how that creates the issue. There wouldn't be any issue on, you know, having different pairs of council members at these sessions if they are more just lis- listening sessions and in dealing with COVID in general, as opposed to specific COVID COVID issues that could be coming before the council.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So so anyhow, I would still like to make the suggestion that the subcommittee just go ahead and schedule these and then, you know, find out which council members are available at the times you schedule them. Because there's logistics there about, well, I know you can get a Zoom room, but, you know, the Facebook Live part of it and everything else. And come up with topics and then just have us do it. So go for it.
The other thought I had too was, um, in terms of potential experts that we would reach out to, um, it may, the exact time slot or day may bear a bit on, and perhaps that was already taken into consideration um, as to whether they could make that time or that's a reasonable time. I appreciate the work that you've done on this. I think it's great. I think it's a good, um, proactive way for us to communicate. And I would like to, um, join the subcommittee except for I can't. So, um, I need to work with city manager and in terms of ways that we can support the effort, however that may be. And, um, and and do it in the right way.
And we did not go forward and ask anyone if they could speak and when they could speak because we needed to bring this back to council prior to doing that.
Right, so I think we should therefore leave the the latitude of w- once that work is done, you making the best choice and suggestion about when and how the scheduling goes to echo what, um, council member O'Neal said. Anything else?
I think that's, I think that's good direction, uh, enough that the committee can continue to work or to plan them. So next thing you'll you'll hear is is sort of more detail about what's going to happen and when and coordinating people's schedules.
Wonderful, and thank you so much, um, to the council members that worked on this and also to staff for, um, making the time. I really appreciate it. All right, let us move on to item ten.
Can we take a five minute break?
Let us take a break. Thank you for asking. Yes, it is eight fifty-five. Shall we try to be back at nine? Is that reasonable? Yeah, okay. Thank you. And of an urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic in the city of Pacifica. So this is an action item. We consider adoption, and it has to be by a four-fifths vote, of an urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for not paying, like I just said. Um, and we have the city manager Woodhouse and city attorney Kenyon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be presenting a staff report tonight. So as you recall, we have, um, actually the council has adopted a few urgency ordinances dealing with commercial uh, tenant evictions. The last one was done on August tenth of this of twenty twenty. Um, and the court, the council adopted urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions. That ordinance expires on February sixth, twenty twenty-one. Since the council's adoption on August tenth of twenty twenty, the governor has extended the city's ability to continue regulating commercial tenant evictions through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Given that and given that our ordinance expires on February sixth, we have prepared the attached temporary moratorium extending that temporary merit more, huh, temporary moratorium, which is also another urgency ordinance. And this one essentially has the same provisions as our last one, which I will go through in a minute. Um, but would expire on the earlier of a hundred and eighty days after this adoption or, should the governor extend this, our ability to regulate commercial tenant evictions past March thirty-first? It will extend for as lo- long as the governor's extension of those, um, of that authority is or until a hundred and eighty days after tonight's potential adoption. And the provisions essentially contain, uh, the same. I'll I'll briefly go through some of the major provisions. It prohibits property owners from recovering possession of commercial real estate property from a commercial tenant for failure to pay rent, provided that the tenant provides documentation to support that the decrease in in their net bu- business income is related to COVID nineteen. Property owners must also provide also all commercial tenants with notice of this urgency ordinance. The tenants must demonstrate a nexus between their inability to pay and COVID-related reasons. The ordinance only applies to commercial businesses with gross receipts of two point five million dollars or less. It allows any commercial tenants to use this urgency ordinance as an affirmative defense in any unlawful detainer action. And it allows the tenants to pay back any unpaid rent up to ninety days after the expiration or termination of our urgency ordinance. And, you know, to that point, it's important to understand that this urgency ordinance does not relieve the tenants from having to pay the rent. It just delays payment. And in this case, it will delay payment until ninety days after the termination of this urge urgency ordinance. And that pretty much sums up all of the key provisions in the ordinance, and I'm available to answer any questions. But essentially, this will just continue, um, the the city's moratorium on commercial tenant evictions as it has been in place since April of twenty twenty. And as the mayor did note, it does require a four-fifths vote of the council in order to pass tonight. And it will go into immediate effect upon adoption tonight.
Sue, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. Questions from council, um, before we take public comment? Mayor Battleas, did you have your hand up?
I did. These issues are torment me. Because if you go ten months without paying rent, how are you ever going to pay rent? How about the person who owns, um, a a mo- a mixed-use building where there's a tenant downstairs who's commercial and they're upstairs? And they owe the money. They have no relief. There is no relief for landlords at this time. There hasn't been relief for landlords. And I think that we're, people get buried deeper and deeper in a hole. And I don't think they can ever get out of the hole, and that's a problem. So that's my comment for right now.
I I I know that wasn't really a question, but I can provide a somewhat of a reply to that. That that is a cons- that is a concern. I think the legislators are aware of that concern. I think, um, they are trying to deal with the potential ramifications of these temporary moratoria. And I I'm hopeful, or I hope, I'm not hopeful. I hope that the legislator will try to address it in some form or fashion. I I believe I have heard that the legislature is trying to address those back payments, at least with regard to residential tenant moratoria. Um, but, you know, they have not been able to reach a deal. And and as I think we'll discuss on the next item, things are moving rapidly. And, you know, things change daily. And, um, I I don't know what the legislature is going to do about that reality. But I believe that it's being discussed and they should come up with some way to address that big concern because it is a big concern, not just with commercial tenant evictions, but with residential tenant evictions as well.
Other questions, comments? Okay, not seeing any.
Could, we couldn't just go to the time when the governor says on March thirty-first? Be- because he extended that it.
We we need to put a definitive termination date in the ordinance because we should either terminate it on a specific date or if we are going to extend it as we are doing tonight, we need to come up with additional findings to support the extension, which we've done tonight. So we we need to put a definitive termination date in there so that it will require us, if we decide to go beyond that termination date, to review those findings to make sure that we can still make those findings. We can make all these findings tonight to extend it. So that's why we're extending it for at least a hundred and eighty more days.
Other questions? Shall we go to public comment?
Yeah.
I see one. Yeah, I see one hand.
We have a comment from Sue Degree, who'll be followed by Ellen H. Sue, please state your name for the record.
Hi, uh, Sue Degree. Yes, it is torturous. Uh, Co- COVID has shown us that, uh, like we always knew, but maybe not with such urgency, that small businesses are the backbone of our city as well as the nation. And, uh, we know by just walking around town that our small businesses are having an extremely difficult time. It is torturous, I'm sure, but maybe not quite as torturous. I don't know. And maybe you'll be hearing from some of those businesses that, uh, own the buildings. I don't know, but it seems like the least we can do. And I'm impressed by the resource center that provides for people that are having an economically hard time. They have counseling, uh, to help people budget. And so like if you can't pay any rent at all, uh, it does seem like you're going to be having a hard time. You're going to end up on the, you know, out the door anyway. So who wins with that? But, um, I I think they're business people and they probably are pretty good at budgeting so that they pay something along the way so that when that ninety days kicks in, they can still, you know, manage to pay off to the owners. Uh, the other thing is we're moving into a different tier now. So hopefully these businesses, especially restaurants, and well, any business, small business that can now have people inside, will do a lot better than they have been recently.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellen H., followed by Suzanne Moore. Ellen, please state your name for the record.
Okay, Ellen Hague. Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Ellen Hague, a resident of Pacifica and member of Pacifica Housing for All and Faith and Action Bay Area. I'm speaking in support of the goals of Assembly Bills fifteen and sixteen that would provide eviction protections and rent relief that are just.
Excuse me, Helen?
Yes.
Um, the I, I think you're, um, you're needing to wait for the next item.
Oh.
Um, item is regarding a commercial tenant evictions.
I thought you said number, I thought it was number eleven. I I apologize.
No, we're not there yet.
Sorry about that.
Would that we were, we're on number ten. We'll get there. No problem.
We'll hear now from Suzanne Moore. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, and I support this urgency ordinance. Um, our our businesses are Pacifica family and we need to help them in this crisis. So, uh, let's, uh, go ahead and vote and support this urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Not see any other hands at the time, at this time. No. Oh, yes, no, wait, yes, I do. Are you seeing that assistant city clerk?
Gloria Stofan, please state your name for the record.
Yes, uh, this is Gloria Stofan and a member of, uh, Pacifica Housing for All. But definitely the, uh, ordinance, urgency ordinance should go in. Uh, I thoroughly support, uh, the fact that, uh, this is needed and needs to be decided tonight. And I I was thinking maybe it could go till June thirtieth, which, uh, has somewhat already been decided at the state, uh, for for rent, rent issues, rental issues. Anyway, this is, uh, where I'm at with our community and our need to help the small business, uh, person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no further hands. I'll bring it back to council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Um, yeah, I so I wanted to comment one thing that there, there is money coming in, um, to pay for back rent. Um, I'm commenting on, um, council member Vadois's comment, and it can be for property owners, like mixed-use property owners and so, and landlords. So please let folks know that the the resource center is able to help landlords with their mortgages. So I don't think everybody understands that. And, um, I don't really, I don't really feel like I need to discuss anything else. I think we need to protect people as much as we can in every way that we can, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Uh, council member Big Stick.
Thank you, mayor, and to, um, Sue Battleas's point, I I think that also probably a lot of these business owners are probably having a difficult conversation um, with themselves and those whom they have these businesses with, um, considering the weight of, um, the burden to be paid when this is all through. And, you know, that's their opportunity to have that honest conversation while we're trying to help them. And I I was heartened by, um, city attorney's comment that the state may, in the long run, come through to help them even that much more. And that's no guarantee, but that's the life we have is one where there's no guarantees. And in the meantime, we have serious business owners, you know, considering those serious equations for their business. And I think that the more we, um, work together to help each other during this unprecedented time, uh, the better the odds that we'll all get through it together. And so I'm happy to vote in favor. the better the odds that we'll all get through it together. And so I'm happy to vote in favor of this shortly.
Thank you. Any other further comments from council? Okay, then let us have your motion, Mayor Protan Beer.
I move to adopt an urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in the city of Pacifica by a four, five vote.
I'll second.
Mike seconded before I did.
Item number 10, moved by Beer, seconded by O'Neill. We'll call the roll call vote. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Reluctantly, because I support the local businesses, yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And item number 10 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. All right. We are now moving on to item 11. Resolution of support for AB 15, Assembly Bill 15, COVID-19 Relief Tenancy, oh, COVID-19 Relief Tenancy, Tenant Stabilization Act of 2021. And this is an action item, considering whether to adopt the attached resolution supporting California Assembly Bill 15, COVID-19 Relief. And we have City Manager Woodhouse.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Protan Beer, and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. And I'll, I'll kick this off. Mayor Protan Beer had requested this be added to the agenda. And staff didn't have time to really put much analysis or any analysis into the bill in the staff report. So as a, as a placeholder to that, and for your information in the public, so I attached the 45 page bill, Assembly Bill 15, which is currently being considered by the legislature. It's in committee at this point, is my understanding. Really is primarily focused on residential tenant eviction moratorium and extending the deadline or extending the, the period for Assembly Bill 3088, which the governor signed August 31st of 2020. What, that's due to expire January 31st of this year. So AB 15 will be taken up in, in short order, I presume, and is to extend it through the end of 2021. You, as part of the bill, you have the, the Legislative Council's Digest. And I just wanted to highlight quickly, on my quick read of it, some of the additional provisions, because that's not all the bill does. So it, it does more. And it clarifies some things, and then it holds to some of the definitions and parameters of 3088. But a couple highlights that I, that jumped out at me are that it would extend the definition of COVID-19 rental debt. So similar to the commercial eviction moratorium, it's all based on, you know, having COVID-19-related concerns. Extend that definition of rental debt as unpaid rent or any other unpaid financial obligation of a tenant. So that's, that's one of the, the changes. The, the other, that, a couple others that, that jumped out were that the bill would prevent, would prohibit a housing provider, credit reporting agency, tenant screening company, or other tenant entity that evaluates tenants on behalf of a housing provider from using alleged COVID-19 rental debt as a negative factor in a credit report for renting. So that's another protection that, that it adds to make sure that your credit score is not going to be harmed if you're not paying rent due to this, this law. And then finally, in, in terms of mobile home residency law and the management of a mobile home and trying to terminate a tenancy due, due to a change of use of the mobile home park. Currently, I, I guess that's a 15-day written notice, and, and this bill would change that to a 60-day written notice. So those are some of the other provisions that, that caught my eye, but I know you've probably all read, read the entire bill, so you can, you know, call out or discuss other pieces of it. And the City Attorney is also available on, based on her quick read of the bill. You know, if, if there's questions that we can answer at this time.
There is just, I'm sorry, if I could just add one, one point. As, as Ms. Reese pointed out today in public comments, the legislature has apparently reached another deal on a different bill that is, we, we don't know what actually is going to happen to AB 15 because the, the agreement that was reached today dealt with similar issues, but extended it only till June 2021, not December 2021. But the, my point being that I think it is important for the council to support legislation like this. But I also want the council to be aware that things are changing daily and that AB 15, since it's only in the assembly right now, it's in committee, it may not come out of committee now, because there's been another deal. Not to say that, you know, the council shouldn't go forward and support this version. I just want to alert the council that things may change and, and we may be bringing a different bill back to you at some future date.
Michael, I'm sorry. For O'Neill.
Yeah, then in light, I mean, I had heard that there were several, two or three different bills for tenant protection and stuff. And I support the idea of the tenant protection, but I would like to make this resolution more generic instead of just AB 15. Maybe wordsmith it so that it is that due to COVID-related rental issues that the Pacifica City Council supports a moratorium on evictions, as well as I saw in part of 15 there. There was some protections for, for owners of the property also, because there's a lot of mom-and-pop landlords that are kind of, you know, getting screwed too. So I would like to maybe amend this resolution and leave it up to staff and the mayor to review when she signs it. A moratorium on tenant evictions and protections for landlords instead of being AB 15, which we've seen sausage, I've been around the block long enough to know that sausage is made up in Sacramento. And God knows, you don't know whether it's going to be linguice or, or breakfast sausage, you know, so.
And I.
Mayor Protan.
Sorry. Actually, I think Councilmember Big Stick was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. My eye traveled to you. Go ahead, Councilmember Big Stick.
I was gonna ask something similar to what my Councilmember O'Neill asked. And I think that if I comment further, it probably goes too far into the deliberation mode. So I'm gonna give it back to Mary for now.
Okay. Mayor Protan.
Um, yeah, I guess I just wanted to explain, you know, why I brought it forward. So can some constituents brought this idea to me. And of course, I feel like it's really important for us to support anything that we can to help our people, especially during this pandemic. Everybody obviously understands that, you know, people are having a terrible time. And, and so anything that we can do to support our community is important for me. And so that's why I brought it here. And I do know that our colleagues in South San Francisco, they actually did kind of something similar to what Councilmember O'Neill was talking about. And they wrote a letter supporting the extensions of moratoriums as stated in AB 3088. But yeah, they, they broadened it. So it was like, we support the extensions of, of moratoriums, but not necessarily the one AB 15. So there, there is ways that we can word it differently to be more.
Councilmember Big Stick.
I, I'm wondering if when the wording does come, if it might be possible to say AB 15 or anything that might encompass the world of. And I, I'm very curious to hear what the public has to say on that point, because I, I'm not sure whether or not yet I favor a wording that is specifically AB plus anything else that might come down the pike, or simply anything that comes down the pike. And I don't know if there is a benefit to adding the specificity along with the general, when really it's the general message that we're trying to convey. But again, I'm kind of really curious to hear what the public has to say on that point, because I don't know.
Madam Mayor, we can, we can hear from the public now, or I can give you my thoughts on how to revise the resolution to address some of the comments that I've heard council members make, so.
And I wanted to ask your guidance, because I have some comments to report and to bring forward in, from Assemblymember Mullin on this issue as well. And so I wasn't sure if it's now or after public comment would be the best time for that.
I, I think that would probably be best to hear now before we hear public comments, so that the council can get a full under, that, to me, that is sort of an addition to the staff report. So we should hear it now, so that the public has the full panoply of what the council is, is informed about and is going to be deliberating on.
Okay, so I reached out to Assemblymember Mullin, because I understood that he was going to be co-sponsoring this particular bill. And I wanted some clarification in, in understanding that there are multiple other bills that are floating, and there's a lot of different timelines and different specifics. And so I asked him for clarification on that, and specifically in regard to the expiration date or the timeline. And his response to me is, from the leadership press release today, "We are announcing an agreement to extend the eviction moratorium in California through June 30, 2021, protecting tenants and small landlords from losing their housing as the nation continues to confront the pandemic. We are also moving forward as quickly as possible to deploy California's share of the latest federal stimulus bill, ensuring that up to $2.6 billion in renter aid is administered quickly, equitably, and accountably." And that's the end quote. And then he went on to say, "We are expecting a floor vote on a budget trailer bill encompassing these policies on Thursday, and I expect it to pass." So there's that to bring forward. And you had some comments you wanted to, or guidance for us.
I, I, you know, with regard to the comments about expanding the resolution, I would recommend that that be done as well. And it can easily be done if we just add to, in a couple of key points in the resolution language where it would, where we refer to AB 15, we would just add at the end of that and other, or other similar legislation. So that, that, you know, covers other legislation that is similar to AB 15, which, you know, what the mayor's just spoke about, or what, you know, we have been speaking about tonight, would fall under, I think, or other similar legislation. So that would be my recommendation. It's a simple fix. We just put it into a couple of places, and I think that would suffice to, to adopt a resolution that would include what the council, I believe, is intending.
I think that's way too wide open. That could encompass anything.
Similar to AB 15. So, so it would be related to moratorium on residential tenant evictions.
Well, AB 15, if you read part of it, does have some provisions there to protect small landlords that are being squeezed because there's no rental income to help pay the mortgage, so. You know.
And, and.
I support what Michelle was saying. Yes.
And, and of course, if, if there is, you know, we, we hear what you all are saying. And if there is legislation that comes down that is similar, yet substantially different, we would, we would most likely bring that back to the council. So I wouldn't say that this, you know, is giving the council a blank check with regard to what it is approving. I think the language or other similar legislation, it would have to be similar to AB 15. I think the, the, the point of expen, of expanding it is to allow for the reality of what is happening. You know, AB 15 may die, but there could be AB 16 that is slightly different, but has a different number. I think that is the intent of expanding this language. If there is another bill that comes out of this that is closely related to AB 15, but has a different number, that should be covered by this resolution. And that's, that's my understanding is the intent of that expanded language.
Um, Councilmember Vatalas?
Okay, I'm gonna turn this into a question. I have a property management tenant. The owners were moved to Colorado. Their tenant is four people living in a four-bedroom. They pay $3,600 a month. They are now behind three months in rent. The owner, their mortgage is $3,500 a month. So they're behind. Are they gonna foreclose? It's been 10 months, and they keep saying they're going to give landlords some protection. And I haven't seen any. What are those people supposed to do? I referred them. I referred the tenant to PRC. But who's going to make that up? Can those people ever catch up? And what happens to the landlord? They lose their house? Is that right? So I, I would like a solution for that. And they keep saying after 10 months, they're gonna provide landlord protection, and they haven't done it once. So I'd like to see where that is.
Okay, I would like to ask the City Attorney about public comment and about where to go from this point.
Well, I, I think if those are all the questions, and, and I apologize, Councilmember Vatalas, I, I do not have an answer to that. Because I, I, I don't know what's going to happen. All I know is that I have heard that there are discussions for both landlord assistance as well as tenant assistance. You're correct, it hasn't happened for landlords, but I don't know that that means that it will not. And, and I say that because the reality is what is going to happen and for tenants and landlords at the end of all this is something that needs a fix. And, you know, I just have to hope that the legislature will do something about it. But that, that's, that's, that's as much as, as we can, can hope for at this point. So to, to your question, Madam Mayor, I think that so long as we've gotten all the questions answered, you should open it up to the public and then bring it back for deliberation. And then the council can deliberate more on comments as Councilmember Vatalas has brought up and, and others. But I would hear from the public now.
That sounds good to me. And I've, at the time, I've seen only one hand raised so far. I see second now going up, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. Okay, I think I see six, seven, eight hands. Is that what you're seeing, Assistant City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Eight hands times three minutes is 24 minutes. Eight hands times two minutes is 16 minutes. Check my math, Mayor Protan. Do you how does counsel feel about limiting comment to two minutes? And I will, yes, I'm seeing nodding heads. Yes, okay. I will add to that two minute limit, please. If someone has said what you were just going to say. Please don't necessarily repeat it word for word, but add your support to that comment. Thank you very much. Okay, Assistant City Clerk.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first speaker will be Anita Reese, followed by Suzanne Moore. Anita, please state your name for the record.
Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. So I just wanted to let the council know that. Probably within the next week or so, this the county will be receiving twenty three million dollars to specifically pay for back rent. We're not a hundred percent sure how much we can pay towards future rent. But the focus of those federal funds is to pay back rent specifically. So right now, we're still in the process of figuring out how that's going to be administered, but the county is waiting to give those funds to the court agencies. So what I would say is moving forward for folks who are going to be eligible for the eviction moratorium. That is hopefully going to be moving forward through June thirtieth, that folks will be able to connect them to a court agency to pay the back rent. And then, of course, the hope is that people are going to be, as as things are being lifted, will be able to go back to work and be able to pay their forward rent. But recognizing how much people are accumulating in that debt. Not only will it help the renters, it will help the people who own those properties. So currently, what we're looking at potentially doing is taking somebody's rent, timesing it by a year. And that's the maximum a family could actually receive for back rent if they need it. Now, again, that hasn't been a hundred percent finalized, but that is the plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Moore, followed by Carolyn Harmio. Please state your name for the record.
Suzanne Moore, Member of Pacific Housing for All, and I'm in favor of Pacifica Resolution in support of AB fifteen. The state build a safeguard both against both evictions and foreclosures. And provide a pathway toward economic recovery in the COVID pandemic. I realize our governor is close to a vote on modification of this bill, but I believe AB fifteen drafted by area Democrats, David Chu. And go authored by Gavin Mullen is better. But a change in our resolution wording to similar legislation sounds pretty okey doke to me. Why should Pacifica voice support? Because our legislators in our community will benefit if council expresses that support now. And at this timely moment. There's general consensus that AB thirty eighty eight, set to expire in a few days, slowed the COVID spread by keeping people in their homes. No one should be forced to move now, not when we're just beginning to see a slow in the post holiday surge. Not when we hear viral mutations in our county with increased transmission. Not when unemployment is increasing, not when there's an increase of homelessness, not when legislators are still working out details. The symbolic gesture of passing a Pacifica resolution in favor of AB fifteen would mean a lot at this moment. Please vote yes, and thank you, Mayor Protem Beer and city staff for placing this resolution on this evening's agenda. Thank you.
Carolyn Harmio, followed by Gloria Stofan. Carolyn, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Carolyn Harmio, longtime homeowner here in Pacifica, a member of Housing for All. I'm urging you to go ahead and adopt this resolution and modify it if you must. But realize that the legislature needs to hear from cities and jurisdictions in the state. To that this bill is necessary to help protect vulnerable tenants. In San Mateo County alone, there could be fifteen thousand people that could be evicted if this moratorium is not extended. So I think that's something that we need to think about seriously and what impact that would have on our community. It will cost the city nothing to show this support for vulnerable residents and help keep them safe, help protect their credit rating. It helps keep not only residents in tenant residents, but it keeps the whole community safe. So I hope that you will support this resolution. And it's pretty close to its original form in support of AB fifteen. If you wish, you could also write another letter in support of homeowners or in. Landlords and have that also submitted to the legislature. But AB fifteen is is really necessary for vulnerable tenants who have no one else speaking for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Stofan, followed by Ellen H. Please state your name for the record, Gloria.
My name's Gloria Stofan, a member of Pacifica Housing for All and Faith in Action Bay Area. I'm wanting the council to endorse the principles of AB fifteen. I'm reaching out to you as a very concerned resident of Pacifica. This bill states and and basically expands the expiration date. And at this point in time, it could be June and 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 it could end at the end of the year as well. It this expiration date that we're that's happening right now, though. Would evict San Mateo County alone of over fifteen thousand households or thirteen percent of the renting population. AB fifteen will extend the statewide eviction protection. Many of our at-risk families have lost their jobs and continue to be prevented from working by the shelter in place orders. Thus putting these families at a much greater risk for contracting COVID nineteen. As cases continue to rise, it is endangering our public health and our economic future. As Assemblyman David Chu, author of Assembly Bill fifteen and sixteen stated. A recent UCLA study found that states that lifted eviction moratoriums in recent months saw. An estimated four hundred thirty three thousand seven hundred new COVID cases and ten thousand deaths. This isn't theoretical. Those are real lives that could have been saved. We can't allow that to be California's faith. I'm urging you to submit a city resolution to encourage our state legislators. To extend the eviction protections until this horrific pandemic is over. I thank you for your support and urgency to this matter.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Ellen H., followed by Sue Degree. Please state your name for the record.
Ellen Hague. Good evening, City Council and staff. I'm a resident of Pacifica and member of Pacifica Housing for All and Faith in Action Bay Area. Our collective well-being very much depends on your support of the goals of Assembly Bills fifteen and sixteen. That would provide eviction protections and rent relief that are desperately needed. The governor's new proposal SB ninety one, which would extend AB thirty eight thirty eighty eight. Through the end of June will help tenants vulnerable to eviction and homelessness through no fault of their own due to the due to COVID. Federal funds will be available for rental assistance, so I urge you. To vote for a resolution to support the strongest comprehensive relief package from the state for renters. And also for impacted housing providers. AB thirty eight thirty eighty eight has been providing rent and debt relief, critical needs in Pacifica. And it expires in six days. We are looking to you for leadership and to respond to the impacts of the COVID crisis inflicted on our community. And to support state rent and debt relief. Programs that will respond to the most urgent needs of our Pacifica residents. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Sue Degree, your next speaker, followed by Marsha Murphy. Sue, please state your name for the record.
Hi, Sue Degree. Yes, just as we looked at our small businesses and how they were. Facing torment tormentous issues, and they're the backbone of our city. So these are our residents facing in six days, another horrendous crises. And so we we don't want them to be homeless. That's going to be costly and more likely have COVID. These are two things that we certainly don't want for our residents. And so doing this and also following up with a letter certainly is a good idea. Because we also care for the landlords as well. So definitely, please do do this.
Okay, thank you.
Marsha Murphy, followed by Delia McGrath. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Marsha Murphy, a resident of Lindemar. And I just want to put my support with all those people that spoke before me. I'm very happy to hear that this council is looking for ways to help its tenants. We have too many people living in their vehicles as it is, and we don't want to add to that population. So thank you and please support AB fifteen or whatever. Staff is able to put together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Delia McGrath, you're our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Delia McGrath, and good evening, council. I'm happy to be here to talk to you. Thank you, Mayor Protem Mary, for getting this on the agenda since it's such an urgent matter. I couldn't say anything better than Suzanne Moore, Carolyn Harmio, Gloria Stofan, Ellen Hague, Sue Degree and Marsha Murphy. So I'm supporting their thoughts and their rationale and urging you to pass the resolution supporting AB fifteen. And then the letter supporting also help for the landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I don't see any other hands. I will bring it back to council. For further discussion, deliberation and decision. And Councilmember Big Stick will speak.
Thank you very much. So I heard a couple different folks. Speak on the idea of writing a letter in support of landlords, which is absolutely something I could get behind. That being said, while I was reading through the law this weekend. There was just this brief little snippet somewhere in the middle, and I could give you the exact section that's being amended and packet page and blah, blah, blah. But frankly, I want to take it out of context because when I read those two little sentences. It kind of gave me a sense of what's trying to be accomplished by this. So if you'll humor me, it's quick. I'm just going to read this verbatim. There is anticipated to be an unprecedented number of claims arising at non-payment of residential rent that occurred between March first twenty twenty. And January thirty first twenty twenty one related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. These disputes are of special importance to the parties and of significant social and economic consequence collectively. As the people of the state of California grapple with the health, economic and social impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And when I read that, it kind of hit home to me. Yes, this is a thing that's doing its absolute best to try to encompass. You know, the consequences of a pandemic, which is something in our lifetimes, we've never had to have the opportunity to grapple with. So. Like Sue said, you know, if we can do this for businesses, certainly we can do this for the people living in the homes. And certainly, to my sensibility, the idea that this will prevent widespread homelessness. I think is a darn good idea in and of itself, but this is all within the context of a pandemic. Which means that should a bunch of folk lose housing en masse now, while we are all supposed to be sheltering in place. That's a whole heck of a lot of people that will not have a shelter in which to be in place. Which means that as we're trying to get a pandemic under control and whatever amount of time it takes to get that shot in our arms. It gets to go back up again, and we all get to worry again. And those of us who are blessed enough to be able to afford our rent get to shelter that much more ardently. As you know, than a a social calamity occurs, the likes of which. I don't know how to conceive. So that all being said. I'm very much in favor of supporting this either which way. And it sounds like. Everybody beyond us is doing absolutely everything they can to try and get monies together. To get rents paid so that it goes to the landlords so that they don't lose their mortgages. And certainly on top of that, if you want to add to this a direction to create a letter in support of landlords. By golly, am I in favor of it.
Okay. Other comments, questions, discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to make a motion, just to kind of make a motion that the council. Direct staff to write a letter in support of a tenant moratorium. And AB fifteen does have provisions in there for delaying any sort of landlord, you know. Foreclosures or whatever. Okay, I would like to make a motion to in support of a moratorium for renters and support for landlords during the COVID pandemic. Time period. That's the motion.
Do we need a second for before we have discussion? Or do we can we have questions?
Yes, yes, we need we need a second before we can deliberate on that motion.
I will second.
Okay, Councilmember Battleloss.
The remedy right now for landlords is called forbearance. Forbearance means you take your payments that that have not been paid to you that you can't pay. And you put them at the end of your loan. What that means for the landlord is it's called not paid as agreed. Not paid as agreed is the same as a foreclosure on your credit. And you will not be able to do anything later because it ruins your credit. And a lot of people have done that, thinking that that's what the government says they should do. But it ruins their credit. So now, due to no fault of their own, now they also have horrible credit.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you. So I I know that from this law, there's a lot in there for tenants to not have problems with their credit as a result of all of this happening. And I'm not a lawyer, so it was easy for me to get lost a little bit as I was trying to read this. I'm wondering if city attorney has had the opportunity to read this, if she can. Tell me whether or not there's a similar something in there for landlords to not have to worry about their credit being affected also. Or is it purely the tenants in this law?
I I do not believe it impacts landlords. I believe it only addresses tenants.
The yeah, with credit reported agencies would all be covered by the Fair Credit Reporting Act, I believe, and that is federal law. So therefore, the state cannot do anything. It is up to the federal government to cure that problem. However, as Anita said, and if you do read part of this, it does delay. Any type of action for the. For the lender to take action against the the landlord, okay? Not regards to reporting the credit agency, but in regards to taking possession of the property. So I mean, we can't really take and we can do nothing about what's reported to credit agencies. That is federal law, not state.
Mayor Protem.
So I want to thank my my co-council for even engaging in this conversation. I think it's really important that that we're having it, we're talking about it, we're learning from it. You know, hindsight, I I probably would have added AB sixteen to talk about AB sixteen to you because that's a different. Assembly bill that addresses landlords. I think I haven't read it all the way, so but that's what I understand. But tonight, we're not talking about that. And I I look forward to being able to to also have a resolution that that we can address that as well. And so really, what I. What I want to do is just show our support, and that's what a resolution does. So I just want to. So I just want to thank you, and that's just my comment.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I know, sorry, this is Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I know there's a motion regarding writing a letter, and I just wanted to ask the council in regards to that versus the resolution that is being proposed. So are those two separate things?
I don't, if you want to redo a resolution, or if you want to do a letter, I'm, you know, you work it out with city attorney, I'm just making, the, my motion is to show the intent of the council. And whether you want to do a letter or a resolution. If they're voting on it Thursday, it might be quicker to do a letter, and then you sign it, okay? But I just wanted to make a resolution, a motion to show the intent of council.
And, and just to get clarity, Councilmember O'Neil, your motion only related to the issue with landlords? Or did it also cover the resolution that we have in front of us tonight on the agenda, AB 15? My suggestion would be that we keep these separate, that we not combining the two, that we can, we can do both. You can, you can, you know, address the resolution you have in front of you, and we can wordsmith it to deal with, you know, comments related to this resolution. Then we can also deal with, within this agenda item, if council would like to give direction to staff to prepare a letter indicating its interest in supporting landlords or whatever language you want, and you'd like the manager to send out a letter on, you know, prior to Thursday, you can do that. But I would suggest that you keep these two issues separate. Otherwise, it's going to get too confusing.
Okay.
Clarification, then, if city clerk can read back what the motion was? Because I remember the motion being a letter as well. Can we be clear on what the motion is?
That's a great suggestion.
So I understood the motion to be council directing staff to write a letter in support, in support of landlords. And, and then all, and then also the support of the resolution regarding AB 15. And it's, and similar, and or similar.
The verbiage in there are similar intent.
So it was both in the motion, and city attorney is advising to separate them? Or it's okay to have both in the motion as long as they're two separate things?
Yeah, no, I, I, thanks for clarifying that, city clerk. Because listening to that motion now, it's clear that what you're saying is, in addition to this resolution for AB 15, which you would like to have some wordsmithing done to also allow for, you know, support for similar legislation, in addition, you would like a letter of support to be sent by the manager relating to landlord relief. Is that accurate? Yes, that, that would be okay. And I believe that if it's okay with the seconder, if that was your understanding, Councilmember Big Stick, then, then you would just say that was your understanding and your second stance.
You're mute.
Councilmember.
You're mute.
No, oh, sorry, that is my understanding. I would like to discuss just for a moment longer the letter itself before we vote, if that's appropriate.
That's, that's fine. I just need to know for the record that you, given that clarification on the motion on the floor currently, do you still want to maintain your second on that motion?
That's resolution and letter.
And it's all one motion now?
Absolutely.
Okay, that, now, now you can deliberate on the motion itself and the letter that would be sent in accordance with the motion.
That letter, based on what Councilmember Vadalas was saying, it sparked in my mind the idea that maybe we're not just sending this letter to the state, but also to the federal government, whether that be through Representative Spear's office or whomever. I don't know who one would send that to, but perhaps this letter could go to the federal as well so that they know at least one little municipality somewhere is thinking in terms of the landlords and alleviating that onus from their credit record, et cetera. Is that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I understand, and I'm okay with that, and, you know. So so staff is clear, can we have a vote?
I just wanted to check in with Councilmember Vadalas first. I just thought you had your hand up, or you had a comment?
I did. I mean, okay, so I want to say too that I care about all the tenants. I think it's important to keep tenants housed. It's a major issue. Not one of the landlords who I deal with have raised the rent in actually about three years because they do care about the tenants. And this is, again, one of the toughest issues of all. And if you put these two items together, they're totally different. They're totally different issues. So I just don't see grouping them together.
You know, I think I, I think I agree with that, Councilmember Vadalas. Because I think it, if we're going to show our support for, for property owners and landlords, that it deserves more attention than we can give it in this motion, if that makes sense to anyone.
Okay, then I will withdraw my motion and make another motion that we support the resolution to support AB 15.
I'm sorry, before, if you're going to withdraw your motion, then we need the seconder to withdraw his second, and then you can make a new motion.
Okay, withdrawn.
Okay, I make a second, I make another motion that we support AB 15 with the change wordsmithing that says, or similar moratorium, rental moratoriums, bring back, have direct staff to bring back a resolution next, next month, first meeting, to in support of landlords that we will direct to federal government.
I will happily second that one.
First, one motion, and then direction to staff with the other one. So there's only one motion, one resolution.
Right.
Okay, so we should vote on the motion unless there's further discussion. And then I want to ask a question about the thing we're bringing back next time. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready, city clerk? Copy?
So I have a motion by O'Neil for the resolution to support AB 15 as amended with the language provided by city attorney. And a second by, and then a direction to staff to bring to the next meeting an item for a letter to support the landlord and property owners with a second by Big Stick. And for the roll call vote, Councilmember Big Stick?
Aye. Yes.
Councilmember Vadalas?
No.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer?
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Yes.
And that passes with a vote of four to one.
Okay, so regarding the letter, is it a letter of support from the city manager, signed by the city manager? Is it a resolution from the council?
I was just going to say maybe a resolution. We did a resolution for tenants, we do a resolution for landlords.
But in that case, then, are we also endorsing and underscoring a specific piece of legislation? Or as city attorney said, something, AB 16, whatever, or similar legislation for this purpose?
I, I would suggest that we do it more generic in just the intent of what our is, what our goal is, so that we can send it to the state and Jackie Spear and the federal government, so we get off with one resolution.
My next thought is originally you had said to feds, but I feel like we want it to both. I mean, at least I want to put that forward. So how do we proceed on that, in terms of direction? Do we have a motion about it? Do we?
No, no, because the motion is already made and passed. So now you're just getting clarification. So now the question would be to the city manager. City manager, do you understand the direction, or do you need more clarification from the council?
Well, the, the motion says a letter, but we can bring back a resolution unless you think that needs to be clarified in the motion. I am not aware of pending legislation, you know, regarding landlord property owner protections. We can research that, but otherwise, I have direction enough to do a fairly generic resolution about the landlord property owner protection side of the formula and, and bring that back at the next meeting. And it will be, you know, with that, it's sort of like when there's not legislation specifically out there waiting, you know, on agenda for a committee, then it's maybe just a communication generically to our, our representatives at state and federal about that topic. So that's who we would.
The letter, as you said. Council, Councilmember Vadalas, did you have a comment on that?
No, that's fine.
Any other comments or questions, direction for the city manager? Nope, all right. I think we're resolved then. Which would bring us to our final item, and I wonder if we need a little tiny break before we do that? Or we should just forge ahead? A tiny one, okay? So it's 10:09, let's shoot for 10:15, at the latest. If you're done sooner, 10:14. Thank you. Subject of which is the comprehensive annual financial report for 2019-20, recommended action to accept the 2019-20 comprehensive annual financial report, independent auditors report, and other related letters and reports. And we will have a presentation from Assistant City Manager Tina Wermeister and Sheila Tiaio. I'm sorry, I don't know how to say your last name, Sheila.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'll kick off this item and then turn it over to Financial Services Manager Sheila Choi to present the CAFER tonight, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. What I wanted to do is, is first off, thank Ms. Choi for a lot of hard work over the last several months in bringing this CAFER together. CAFER being the short for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And it's, it's, you know, as, as you are aware, we, we are working with a staff vacancy in finance and in the manager's office. And so Ms. Wermeister, Assistant City Manager slash Planning Director, Wermeister also was involved in working on this, as well as the entire financial team in finance, working very closely with the auditors. So it's always a, you know, involved undertaking. But it's, it's a critical document, and Ms. Choi will walk us through it. But at a high level, what I would say, and again, this is for the fiscal year 1920 year, and the audited results. And what you see in the results is our continuing financial transparency and fiscal prudence about how we are managing city finances. Also, what you see in these numbers are the effect of about three months, three to four months of the coronavirus impact. So it captures that effect from March through June. And some of the results point to that with, you know, impacts to revenue growth that, that we saw in here. So two high-level points I'll make, and I will stop there and turn it over to Ms. Choi.
Good evening, council members. Sheila Choi, Financial Services Manager. So the independent auditors of Mason Associates has completed their, the city's fiscal audit 2019-2020 audit, and we received an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. Along with the CAFER, which I will talk a little bit more about later, included in detachments are the audit reports which show our compliance with the requirements of Measure A and Measure W. And the auditors also noted no exceptions in our calculation of our GAN appropriation limit. Because we receive federal grants, we are subject to the single audit. But because we did not meet the 750,000 threshold, the city will not be submitting a single audit for fiscal year 1920. And the last of the reports is the memorandum on internal control, which helped identify areas that could help improve the city's internal controls. For the second year in a row, the auditors have not found any significant deficiencies in our internal controls. So now I'm going to go a little bit more in detail about the comprehensive annual financial report. I'm going to give you an overall. So the finance, the CAFER is, contains three sections. The first section is the introductory section. It's organized and it's, it contains the transmitted letter, which gives a profile of the city and some useful, useful information in assessing the city's economic condition. It also contains the organizational chart and the city staff. The financial section contains the auditor's opinion, management's discussion and analysis, which is also called the MDNA. The MDNA is discussion of the basic financial statement. It gives an overall analysis, basically, as the city's overall financial position improved or deteriorated over the fiscal year, and what are the reasons for the fiscal, for the significant changes. The MDNA breaks down the analysis between governmental activities and the business-type activities. The financial section also includes the basic financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, required supplementary information, which has pension and other post-employment benefits, which is also called OPEB, and the combining and individual statements. The last section is the statistical section, which provides financial trends, revenues and debt capacity, demographic and other economic information. Next page, please. So the basic financial statements are divided into two types, the governmental-wide or the city-wide, which further divides into governmental activities and business-type activities, which includes utility sewer and the beach parking. The other type of financial statement is the governmental fund, which gives a breakdown of each of the city's individual funds. Next page, please. So the governmental-wide statement or the net So the governmental-wide statement or the net asset showed the city's assets and liabilities. As you can see, the city's governmental activity, activities has a total asset of one twenty seven point three million and total liabilities of eighty seven point five million. Total net position comes down to forty nine point three million. The breakdown of the net position is eighty five point seven million, which is an investment in capital asset, net, net of related debt. Sixteen point one million is restricted, and the negative fifty two point five million is unrestricted. This negative amount is because of G A S B requires that the full pension liability be disclosed, even though the liability will not become due until sometime in the future. The city's business-type activity has a net position of twenty four million, which has not changed much from prior years. Next page, please. The statement of activities shows the city's revenues and expenses for the fiscal year ended six thirty twenty, and total revenue of governmental activities is forty five point four million, with expenses of forty two million, leaving a change in net position of three point four million. Even with COVID, the city still managed to increase its net position, although not by much. The fiscal year eighteen nineteen change was ten point seven million compared to only three point four million for this year. The business-type activity had seventeen point four million in revenues and expenses of nineteen point three million, costing a decrease in net position of almost two million. Next page, please. Now let's look at the governmental fund, uh, with specifically the general fund. The balance sheet shows the general fund assets of nineteen three million and total liabilities of three point eight, three point eight million, or actually, um. Yeah, that's right. This includes inventory, uh, leaving a fund balance of sixteen point five million, sorry. The balance is broken down into non-spendable of three point eight million. This includes inventory, prepaid expenses and loan receivables, assigned balance of four point seven million, which includes the fund balance reserves, compensated absences, facilities reserves and childcare reserves. And eight million is unassigned. The unassigned fund balance only increased by half a million from last year. The general, oh, next page, please. The general fund statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance shows revenues of thirty four point six million and expenditures of thirty three point one million, resulting in a positive change in fund balance of one point five million, again, bringing the fund balance to sixteen point five million. This is the end of my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Is this when you kinda want us to go into, if we have some thoughts on the CAFER itself and go into the document? Okay, okay. I was trained by Lorenzo, so I wanna be sure what your program was, you know? Um, first off, uh, in looking at the um, the CAFER itself, um, on page fifteen, can you spell my name right? And then I have not so much questions as a comment that I wanna be sure the public hears, and I'm going down here, scrolling down now. Okay, so, let's see, let's see, to, just to let everybody know, okay, that um, city expenses, in, city revenues increased by half a million, and the, while the city expenses were increased to nine point eight million compared to the prior year. Now, some of this was due to capitalizations expenses, but it still is not, um, it's still not, doesn't mean, it means the city is not flush with cash. And I just wanna be sure the public is aware of that, and that when we move forward with our budget process, that we're actually taking that into consideration. Let's see, and I'm going down cuz I had some other spots, let's see. Let's see. Okay, and the net pension liability, that is just like a mortgage. It is not, you know, you, let's say you have a mortgage of five hundred thousand on your house. That five hundred thousand isn't due tomorrow, that's due within thirty years. And that's basically what our pension liability is. It is something we wanna try to work out, and obviously, it would be better not having that. But I'd just like to make sure that the public looks at this and doesn't see, um, you know, huge, that, oh my god, we don't have enough money to pay for, to keep the lights on on the streets. Um, let's see, there were some other ones I highlighted, and I'm going on this. If any other council member has a comment, I'm more than willing to yield the floor until I find my spots. Let's see, uh, maybe that's it. I'm letting you off easy versus what I did to Lorenzo.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I usually was the one asking questions for Lorenzo. I think that might be it. I thought I had more marked, but I think that's pretty much it.
I am sure, remember, O'Neil, you will come up with your, um, the other question that you had. I did have a question about the general fund, um, undesignated fund balance, and I wanted to um, understand where to find that in the document, um, so that I could come back to it. And asked, also, I wanna ask one other question, but first, we'll go back, we'll do the general fund, undesignated fund balance. And my specific question on that is how that has changed since the year before? I wanna make that clear because it has, I believe, that's one of the sources for expenditures related to COVID. Am I right? Yeah.
Yes. So you can find the undesignedated, or actually, it's called unassigned fund balance. It's on page one ninety-two of your packet.
Thank you.
And last year, uh, I think the balance was at seven point five million.
Right.
So it only went up about five hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And um, in your presentation, you had broken down the government and business activities. Uh, I think it was your last slide, um. And I, can you go back to that slide quickly? I'm sorry, Sarah, because it looks different on my printout. No, go back one more, please.
Probably two more.
Oh yeah, probably. So that's where the change in net position, I think that's what I had a question about. And the one point nine um, loss or over expenditure over uh, revenue. Is that where you were referring to, we see the COVID expenditure expenditures? Or can you explain that again one more time, what that account, what, how?
Not so much on this one, because this is more on the business-type activities, which includes wastewater and beach parking. So it would be in the governmental activities. The, all the, all of the COVID expenditures would just fall under um, governmental activities expenses.
I see, okay. And so those imbalances between program revenue and expenses on the business side, is that common with regard to projects, as we're funding projects, finishing projects? Um, I'm trying to understand how that is, is off.
So the program revenues are the revenues that are related to specific programs. So for example, childcare, when we receive fees, uh, those go into program revenues, whereas general revenues would be like your property taxes, um, all of your taxes.
Okay, and just so, just, so those program revenues, does that also include the enterprise funds, or is that a whole separate location?
Um, so the business type is the enterprise fund. So they also have program revenues as well.
Okay, so program revenues, for example, with recreation um, programs that we didn't hold because of COVID, we would have reduced revenues in that case. Okay, thank you.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
Um, I did, I can't seem to find it. I mean, it is a hundred and thirty-six page document. If I notice that, that the um, C O P that we issued for the police department, police building was issued in two thousand and ten, and I can't quite find it, and I don't know if I missed it, was, is that an interest rate that it might behoove us to try to refinance? Cuz when I looked at one, one page, we had what, three percent um, bonded indebtedness or something like that, if I remember reading it correctly? Uh, did I read that wrong?
I actually don't remember off the top of my head if that's the correct number.
Okay, but could you, could staff look into seeing if that is at a point where we might re, want to refinance? Because I'm sure the interest rates are lower now, you know, and our credit rating is higher, was raised last year, so that maybe it might be worth refinancing that C O P.
Council member O'Neil, we, uh, last fall began talking with our financial advisors about looking at all of our debt and, and whether there are opportunities for refunding any of that. Um, and particularly uh, related to increasing our, our um, availability of, of debt service funding uh, for, you know, important financial needs that we have. Um, and so we're, 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 we're undertaking that right now. Um, I don't have a, an answer for you tonight, but we'll be uh, in, in, as we roll into the budget process, we'll have more information about whether it makes sense. The, the initial reply from the finance team was that the uh, the longer-term cost to that might, may not make sense for refunding currently.
Okay.
All of our major debt issuances, but, um, but we're gonna dig into it in more detail.
Okay, cuz I know we refinanced the pension obligation bonds and stuff, and that made sense. And I was just, you know, looking at that C O P for the police station, if that was something that might be worth it. Okay, um, I can't seem to find any of my other notes, and I don't know whether I deleted them or whatever on the, on the PDF. So I think that's pretty much all my questions.
Other questions from council? Okay, uh, let's check and see if there's any public comment. Probably not, but I wanna open to public comment if there is.
Not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mayor Beckmeyer.
Okay. Then if there are no further questions, we, do we need a motion to accept the report then?
Yes, we'll need a motion to accept the report.
Done, moved.
Second.
A motion to accept, uh, item number twelve by Vatalas with a second by O'Neil, and I'll call the roll call vote. Council member Big Stick.
Yes.
Council member Vatalas.
Yes.
Council member O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Uh, yes, and thank you for all your hard work.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes, and I echo Mayor Pro Tem's um, comments. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you very much.
It was good, good try for the first time, good.
Thank you.
Now, item number twelve passes with a unanimous vote.
Alright then, that is the end of our agenda for tonight.
Out before eleven, I love it.
Yeah, well done.
Any last comments, questions? No, seeing none? We will conclude the meeting at ten thirty-five.
Thank you. Good night.